It's thirty one, I believe, six thirty. So this is our work session. First, we're going to talk about three topics here. Public restroom renovation, heritage walk proposal and a water fountain proposal. Deb Williamson from the Beautification Commission wants to discuss these three items.
Hey, guys. So as you may remember, I was here once before trying and seeking lost funds to remodel the restroom. And when that was denied, we went back to the drawing board and came up with a plan to seek funding through a grant. One of the grants that we're looking at, and when I say we, it's a combination of the Fairfield Beautification Commission, the Chamber Grow Fairfield, and I can't think of the other, Fairfield Cultural Alliance. So we'd like to seek the city's approval to apply for a grant through the Washington County Riverboat Foundation for either a remodeled or a new public restroom. And we've also talked about how, you know, it's been decades since it's been used and the burden on the state and all that. But I just wanted to share with you some photos. And before I share those, let me just say that I was downtown during the Power Wagon Rally and also the night before, the first Fridays. And we just had lovely weather, lovely visitors, and they were going in and out of our public bathroom. And I was a little surprised. So as I was watering flowers on Saturday and I saw a mom and children go in and just turn around and come right back out. So curious, I opened the doors, I went in and... Jason? I just wanted to share with you the photos of what we're using to welcome our visitors.
So I'm sorry, Deb, is this the current?
Public bathroom on Burlington.
On Burlington.
Yeah.
I thought it was closed.
Yeah, a lot of people think it's closed. It's closed most of the time.
They will open it up when there's stuff on the square.
So.
But it's embarrassing.
I didn't touch a single door. And this is why the mom of two littles dashed out the minute she walked in. She didn't stay. This is what she was greeted with.
Yeah.
We have ceiling tiles that help you hear the critters crawling around in the asbestos above. We have... Well, it's kind of hard to see by this photo, but the windows, the glass, it's not tinted, it's just filthy inside now. And this is, you know, I didn't get on a ladder. This is what it looks like in the entry. The tiles are stained and broken and open. It smells. It makes you cough because there's so much pollutant in the air. And there's another filthy view through the glass. And I have to say, these photos even don't even do the horror justice. I have never, ever gone to a bathroom that was this horrible. Is that the last photo?
Yeah. Personally, Deb, I don't think we should be opening it. That's my personal opinion.
I agree, yeah.
I agree too. I didn't think we were opening it.
I believe the reason it's open is because there are some decision makers who think that it's needed for the community. It is getting used when we have events. But as you heard me say, and as you can see with your own eyes, we either need to fix it or shut it down. I would love to fix it. I think it would serve the community tremendously. Our downtown is the heart of our community. And I believe you have notes about tonight's... Becca, do they have access to the notes I sent?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I won't bother, like, reading this all to you, but, you know, just basically, I'm just kind of wanting to discuss this a little bit and just see what you all have in terms of your thoughts about, like, how does a nice public restroom with... Or a welcoming information center that happens to have two really beautiful family restrooms? How do you feel like that lands for our community? Do you feel like that adds value? Because if it does, I can seek grants for this, not using any taxpayer funds. And if there's a concern about... I mean, I've heard people concerned about the vandalism and the abuse of the building by homeless. That's a solvable problem. You can have good security cameras, you can have systems like subscriptions like ADP or Simply Safe, you can have automatic closing doors that lock and open by themselves. Not only does that cut down on the time it takes for someone to physically open the facility, but it also secures the facility. And then if there are motion detectors in the lobby, you're not going to have people vandalizing this after hours. So I may not come up with, just tonight, with like a hundred percent security solution or a hundred percent anti-vandalism solution, but other communities, Washington, Mount Pleasant, they've figured it out. They have public restrooms downtown, and they're nice. In fact, Washington, Iowa, just finished their new public bathroom. It's not quite as nice as the one I envisioned and the one that our group is thinking about. It was funded by the Washington County Riverboat Foundation. It cost them two hundred and eighty thousand or two hundred and seventy thousand, something like that. It's much smaller than the footprint of what we have. And it didn't have, like, an information center or anything about it that... And Connie, you saw the photos of it, it was pretty utilitarian look.
Yeah.
And ours is located on Burlington. And this is a chat GPT rendering. It may look a little fancy for what I'm talking about, but there are a hundred ways you can make the bathroom look better. This is a renovation, so the brick is still there, it's just the roof is raised and the front entrance has like a slightly different elevation. But this is kind of one of many ideas of what we could present as a much more welcoming place for our visitors, so they wouldn't go in, be horrified, turn right around and run out.
Is that still the current footprint?
Yes.
Okay.
And so by comparing this to Washington's, by comparing it to some other fancier public restrooms with similar footprints, preliminary budget is three hundred and fifty thousand. Doug said add fifty for, like, the bond, what did you call it, the?
Bond contingency.
Bond contingency? And then, you know, some unknowns. So I would say requesting five hundred, approximately five hundred thousand from the Washington County Riverboat Foundation would be a ballpark amount to apply for.
I think it definitely adds value, obvious. I mean, I think we need some public restrooms downtown. Like Terry, I didn't know that they were even open to the public, but I think that it would be great if we could redo the... I mean, I love the way that it looks now with the A-frame, you know, on the exterior, but.
Has anyone seen the pretty bathrooms at Chautauqua Park? Now, that was, oh my gosh, they're so beautiful. So just, I just have so much pride seeing that when I go there. And I've lived here forty-five years and just, I can imagine that that's the feeling we would all have if we get something new and beautiful right there on Burlington that we get to see every day. And it probably wouldn't have the same, like, woodsy look that the one in Chautauqua has. But isn't that just the most fantastic? Does everyone know how much that costs?
Five hundred thousand dollars.
Yep. So as you can hear, my estimate is not off by much. It's pretty similar, just different materials, slightly different layout.
Well, I think until such time as we get a renovated bathroom, that we... Personally, I don't think we should be opening that because it's embarrassing.
Agreed.
And we should have worked with Fairfield Arts and Convention Center to have it staffed because that's where people use now. That facility is used a lot during the day for a public restroom. It's a block away, it's not that far away. If you're on the other side of the square, that's going to be a block away. So... And I'm all for applying for grants, but... There's, you know, I'm sorry to be pessimistic, but...
No, I hear you because we've applied, how many it took, four times, to the same foundation.
Right.
Turned down every time, so, you know, it's a slim chance, but.
In twenty years, we've gotten eleven thousand dollars out of that foundation. Maybe eleven thousand five. It's very small.
Yeah, well, that's a shame because they award ten million a year.
Yeah. So I feel like we haven't been treated fairly.
And we're neighbors.
Personally, yeah. Yep, we got people going up in there and using the place.
Yep, yep. So I mean, that's what I'd like to start with. I agree, I think we need to close it, please, close it, stop opening it. And, yeah, I think, like I said earlier, I think the vandalism is, all of that's a solvable problem. I think it would add value, like you said, it's just, it could be wonderful. And Connie, I know we have that fallback plan for part-time use of the civic center, but I'm downtown every single day, every day watering. There's nowhere for me to go. I go home.
Well, and you can come here. Because that's a public restroom too, technically.
Well, I'm here a little earlier than you all are.
Oh, okay. So it's not open then?
Yeah, yeah.
I got you.
But, you know, it'd be nice if we had a place for all of our volunteers. Cambridge is going to have twenty-four intern volunteers July first. And, I mean, are we going to all come here? I mean, it's going to be, it's a challenge no matter what we do, whether it's a volunteer group or a big event where you have two thousand people on the square.
So Council, do you want an action item on next meeting to approve a grant?
Well, I think the idea of renovating the building is nice, but there's also the cost of cleaning and maintaining it going forward. And obviously, we're not paying that cost now.
Yeah, you are, you're heating it seven by twenty-four.
Heating it is very different from cleaning and maintaining the infrastructure.
That's true. So you can actually build self-cleaning restrooms.
We can afford a repartored brick, Cambridge Sports Complex.
Yeah.
And I'm glad you brought that up because I think it would be... Beautification Commission did discuss whether or not we would contribute any of our time to maintaining the restroom, and we could stock it easily and check it between cleanings. A commercial cleaning is fifty dollars a week.
For a space that size or for what?
Two family bathrooms and a little lobby area. It's only seven hundred square feet.
I also spoke with Terry Baker at one point because she was really interested in...
Yeah, and she's part of the group.
Working, yeah, okay.
I tried to talk her into having an office there, and it's not the room works. It's not going to work.
Yeah.
So as I said, I mean, we're already, we're not air conditioning the place, but we're already heating it to keep the pipes from freezing. And there probably are a lot of broken pipes in there, to be honest. You know, we have, what was I going to say? When it is used, we use supplies, so of course that number is going to go up. So that's an expense. But other than that, you know, just keeping it spotless isn't going to be that hard. It's not going to be that expensive. We're talking, lost funds could cover that unless there's some rule against that happening.
Well, I would make a motion to at least put it on the agenda so we could, you know, look into potential grant funding.
Well, we don't make motions. It works essentially.
That's right. I guess I would, I don't know then. I would be interested in seeing it on the agenda so that we could maybe make a motion at that time.
To approve, grant approval?
Yeah.
Okay.
So should it go to committee first and, like, dig into it and find out, like, what all the risks and concerns are or?
Is it an action grant program or is it outright?
Not this one. But honestly, there are other sources of funding for this that won't use taxpayer dollars.
I mean, yeah. I mean, that's beautiful, I like it. I think it's, love to have that building, but I think it's more important to have a building that functions, period. So if that means we could get something more utilitarian for a lot less, you know, again, might depend on how much ground funds you got. So, and how, if you're raising any funds, what that can look like.
Certainly, if we go to donors and we solicit funds from some folks who are very charitable in our community, I've already talked to a few, and they're much more interested in having something we can really brag about.
Okay.
It's like, well, I could get excited about such and such. So the first phase of it is to get it built, whether that means retrofitting, which can cost more weirdly, or tearing it down and building new. Second phase is to bring in vending machines that could be, you know, an attraction along with the information in there, digital information and brochures for what to do, what to see, what's new with Fairfield. And of course, everybody's on their technology, but it's nice to have something tangible when you visit Fairfield or when you're new to Fairfield, when you've moved here. In addition to the vending machines, we envision partnering with Jefferson County Hospital for a... Oh, my brain. Bike rental service, a city bike rental service. We have, I think, the world's best loop trail. I absolutely love it so much. And it would just be so nice to have e-bikes that you could rent at this facility, also at Jefferson County Hospital and possibly a third point. And I know if it was done by the city, it would be a lost leader, but it could be a private partner, private public partnership and not be a burden to the city. So again, that's not phase one, that's just wanting to show you the potential of this lovely new facility that could do more than just provide us with toilet. Okay, so I didn't want to take too much more time on that.
Okay. So Deb, well, excuse me, everybody's kind of in agreement, put an action item on for next council meeting? Okay, let's move on to the next heritage walk proposal.
So what this is... So the heritage walk would be like a walking trail, not like a biking trail, not like a vehicle trail, just walking. And on, it would incorporate alleys, it would start at Carnegie Museum, and by utilizing the alley between the Carnegie Museum, the Edward Jones Building, you would turn, let's see, what is that? You would turn west. And I don't know the name of the alley that it connects with, but it leads straight to Central Park. So walking through this alley, you have on either side brass plaques with Underground Railroad, Wilson Building, you know, different historic buildings or events or anything that, you know, really has through the years become things that we brag about. And on the plaque, not only would it have, like, Underground Railroad as a title, but there's a QR code. So we could listen to the audio describing our history with that. The trail or the walk would cross Central Park, so there could be kiosks, you know, like, at this height where you see a little bit of some imagery and some content, and there's a QR code again. All of this could be linked together through the Cultural Alliance website and their brochures and, in many ways, creating a three hundred and sixty-five a day event, three hundred and sixty-five day a year event for Fairfield. So the walk continues across Central Park. The walk goes down the alley that we were calling Heritage Alley. It's going to be just so beautiful with its outdoor art gallery and plaques on either side of the alley, all the way to the courthouse, including the courthouse grounds, walk, 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 through another alley and all the way to Howard Park and to the depot with kiosks and QR codes. So what I'm seeking is to discuss what steps need to be taken to gain access to the alleys and gain access to Central Park and to, yeah, what would this next steps be? So there's quite a bit of content here, but I'm sure you're all familiar with so many of the things that we are proud of about our heritage and our buildings and our people. Any thoughts?
How would this be funded? Do you have a plan of funding for this?
So.
For plaques and such?
We have access to eight hundred thousand dollars, and I can't remember the name of the grant. It's something Chuck Espy is involved with, so no taxpayer dollars.
Okay.
Just private donation. And then.
I know the brochure, the walking brochure that Fairfield Cultural Alliance did is really nice.
It is, yeah.
And be nice to do it digitally, like you say?
Yeah.
QR codes, I like the idea, plaques.
Deb, when you say access to eight hundred thousand dollars, how?
For this project.
How certain?
It's through the...
How certain are those funds?
They're already there.
They're there?
Yeah, they're there, and Chuck Espy has access to that. It's something he's wanted for years and years, so he's.
So if the council were to green light this project, the money is already there?
The money is already there. And the organization that would be managing the project is not the beautification, but it's the Fairfield Cultural Alliance. So not sure why I'm here other than, maybe Bert couldn't make it, but, yeah.
What do you need from the council, city?
Well, we'd need to access Central Park and to work with someone on council to come up with what material. I mean, there are so many options, painting, painting the walk, laying brick, laying stamped concrete, what would the walk look like? So that kind of thing. And then just getting permission to put it in place.
I'm confused. What do you want to do?
So the walk is more than just the brass plaques, it's something you look down at. So the low budget, you know, not that we need a low budget, but you could paint the walk on the alley. You could create the stamped brick like we have in Heritage Alley, which is, I think, lovely, but that just means it's a longer lead time, possibly it's phase two. Or you could lay brick like we have downtown around the sidewalks. So it depends on, you know, what do we want Fairfield to look like? But just having access to Central Park, like, I need council's permission to do this and to plant the kiosks, and I need council's support to negotiate with, you know, for our city attorney to lean on his assistant to create all those contracts for all the buildings where we have to get.
Just one other question.
From the building owners to put plaques on the buildings.
These funds were available, are these funds also available for maintenance of this build?
I doubt it. I mean, I don't know the answer honestly, but I doubt it.
So if this were to happen, the city would be responsible for the maintenance?
Of the kiosks? I mean, the brass plaques aren't going to require maintenance.
Brass plaques, okay, no.
They'll stay there forever. I mean, if we did pave brick.
Sidewalks in front of businesses are the responsibility of the businesses, not the city.
So there wouldn't be much, there wouldn't be any cost to the city other than?
Well, isn't the brick in the alley though? Because the alley's ours.
That portion is the city's, I guess.
I think it's something that, I mean, it sounds pretty enticing, but it's also something I think at this point is developed enough to go to a committee, maybe property or economic development, to...
Also, I'm wondering about working with the Public Art Committee with this.
Public Art Committee?
Yeah.
So, yeah, so Jasmine Bodie is chair of the Fairfield Cultural Alliance, so she's keyed in with.
And bringing it to a little bit more fruition, a little more.
Add another work session maybe?
Well, as they develop their plan, a cultural plan, he could flesh out some of those details.
Yeah. Yeah, so I mean, clearly early stage, but.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to see what the reaction is.
Overall, you got a positive reaction, council?
I mean, I think so. Seems like a low-risk proposition is better than the city, yeah.
Yeah. The thing I like about it most is it connects to the digital age and it creates events, you know, as needed. People can come, unlimited number of people can come any day of the year and enjoy it. So it's very exciting. Okay?
Which committee, sorry, I have a question. Which committee would we feel that this falls under? Would it be economic development or, sorry, property, public safety?
Well, I think at this point, the idea is maybe that there's more development on the other side, Public Arts Committee, and then bring it back to perhaps a work session and we decide what they have, what we are there.
But property makes the most sense because that's, other than just saying, sure, tear up Central Park, we don't mind, you need to talk with all of the property owners and get permission to put a plaque or plaques on their buildings. And that, wouldn't that be property?
Well, it's not city property.
Right. I mean, to some degree, there might be some city property, but it's probably a mix. So we can decide that later.
Maybe the chamber should be approached.
Say that again?
Maybe the chamber should be approached about this idea and see how they can help with business owners and property owners.
Oh, I see, oh, I see, I see. So just, yeah.
Chamber and/or Grow Fairfield.
Well, the Public Art Committee does have a member of the chamber on it, so they can take back that information there, so.
I know that Jasmine and Bert Chenowski are very motivated to do the legwork and knock on the doors and get, you know, get that going. We would just need that backed up by legal language because it's city, these are city plaques.
Yeah.
Sorry, can you expand on who those people are? What are their last names?
Bert Chenowski is vice chair of Fairfield Cultural Alliance, and Jasmine Bodie is chair.
Okay.
And Jasmine is highly involved in the, what is the?
Public art.
Public art.
Commission. And, you know, it can be a Fairfield, it can be a Cultural Alliance project too, for that matter, you know? Maybe you just want to develop it through there.
Yeah, they were just so excited.
Because they're the ones that put together the original architectural tour. So it kind of, it fits under there as well. Then you got the two people that are really willing to go for it. I think overall, there's positivity here, so I think just flush out more details.
Okay, I can bring, I'll let Bert take the next.
Okay.
Have I used all my time?
We've got just a couple minutes.
All right.
So if you want to.
Let's take a look at water fountain proposal. So I'm proposing, I found a four-tier, but it's actually a three-tier. I don't know why they're not counting the top part. This is a concrete iron fountain, no taxpayer dollars. We will talk about maintaining it, though, that's, I'm sure, going to have some impact. So the idea is to place this on the square, and in terms of the four quadrants, it's best under shade because if you're going to go enjoy the fountain, especially in this weather, why stand in the sun? So you're in the shade, you're hearing the waterfall, and maybe you're getting a little splash. It has a pump that recirculates the water, so it needs access to power. And so all four quadrants of the square have power. And the one that I think would be most appropriate for this is the southwest quadrant. That's the one least, I know, that's the one least used by the vendors for Fairfield or for Fridays. This does need, no access to plumbing because it's recirculating. Beautification Commission voted to maintain it if it gets approved. And what that looks like is putting peroxide in the water and occasionally using a cloth to just stir up the water so that, like, once a month, so that it doesn't throw out. And then to winterize it, it has a drain. It's, I don't know how many gallons it holds, but it gets drained, the pump is removed and taken indoors for the winter, and then there's a cover for it for the winter. It doesn't, it doesn't sit out in the elements collecting snow. So the maintenance of it, you know, requires winterizing it and opening it.
Dealing with bubbles.
The funds are, no taxpayer dollars. I'm sorry, what did you say?
I said dealing with bubbles. That, like, it's not a problem some places, people pour bubbles into fountains and then it's a huge mess.
Happens like twice, once every two years in Oakland.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Maybe it's a bigger problem other places. I'm not trying to put any ideas in anybody's head.
You said this, the southwest corner?
Yes, but is it fun to put bubbles in there? Because we could do.
No, I think it's a mess. I think it's a mess. I think it comes up the fountain.
Deb, what was that?
I'm sorry, you said the southwest corner or quadrant? I'm sorry, you said the southwest corner or quadrant?
Southwest, yeah, like towards Americas.
It's so busy over there.
That'd be seen by, you know, the two busiest intersections, Maine and, or one, the two busiest streets, Burlington and Maine.
I do know there is maintenance. We maintained a fountain for 18 years and every month and a half, we were power washing it.
Really?
Yep.
What was this?
Peroxide doesn't do the job.
Oh.
You know, it does for a while, but then, you know, it gets a little icky and you've got to drain it. And we would always power wash ours.
Okay.
So, just so you know.
So, you had to do more than just, like, rub it?
So, I'd be curious to know what Mount Pleasant does for theirs. Did you talk to them about their maintenance?
No, I didn't. I talked to Fairfield Precast Concrete, the ones that kind of gave me the, the ABCs of taking care of it.
What would it be coated with?
This is iron.
It's concrete-
Concrete.
Over iron.
Under iron.
So-
Over iron.
We call it concrete iron. And it comes in several finishes. If you wanted to see one in real life, there's a smaller version out at Fairfield Precast Concrete. There's also one, ooh, ooh. There's also one, and I knocked on this woman's door, her name's Claudia. She lives at Maine and Madison, in this big old house. And there's a fountain in her front yard that she got from-
Yeah.
And it's so cool. She loves it. She was such a sweetheart. She goes, "Yeah, I got it at Fairfield Precast." So, I asked her how she maintained it. You know, she said the same thing, basically. So, I don't know if it has something to do with, like, the foliage over the, like, if there's a lot of debris falling in it, possibly causing-
That's part of it. It's a mix of a lot of things. So, it is seven o'clock, so I guess, council, if you give Deb feedback on what you're thinking about that. And we'll go from there.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Deb.
So, does anyone need a one-minute break here? If not, let's, it is, like you say, it is seven o'clock, so I'll call the meeting to order. Please call the roll.
Toho?
Here.
Esti?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. But also, I just want to, it's a quick reminder to those in, in the chambers that we would like people to respect the dais. And if you have documents to pass out, to pass, to pass them to either John or Tom here versus coming up to the dais, we won't respect this area here and prefer that you not come to the dais. So, thank you for respecting that. Consent agenda, approval of the minutes of the June 9th, 2025 council meeting. Approval of the June 10th, 2025 special payroll and the amount of $923.34. Approval of the June 20th, 2025 payroll, $209,906.82. Acceptance of volunteer center committee minutes. Acceptance of library board minutes. Resolution of employment in the park and recreation department. Resolution of promotion in the water department. Resolution setting fiscal year '26 salaries. Resolution authorizing fiscal year '26 cigarette permits. Approval of liquor license for Cafe Paradiso Inc. and Shokai. Approval of general obligation debt in the amount of $1,010,852. Approval of HH payment to the Department of Revenue in the amount of $8,367. Approval of total claims in the amount of $734,198.24. Claims more than $75,000 include Kristner Contracting, $163,385.58 for the fire station, EBS, $79,196.74. That would be for our healthcare premiums. And Vostu Partners, $194,935.40. I assume that's for the rebate of their tip. Thank you. So, with that.
Moved to approve consent agenda.
Moved by Gandy.
Second.
Second by Caness. Any discussion?
I did review claims and they seemed in order.
Great, thank you.
But there was no link to the claims on the agenda.
Oops. Yeah, you're right. I did notice that when I did it yesterday, but I kind of forgot. So, yeah, so we can get that linked up. Right? Okay. With that, any other discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes, I just need to abstain from approval of the minutes of the June 9th council meeting.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Toho?
Yes.
Great, thank you. So, we have several public forum appearances tonight. So, just as a reminder, we do want to keep each three to five minutes. We do have a better timer now. It's easier for you to see that Doug will put up on the little thing here. And when it goes, when you have a minute left, it turns to red. So, it's a little bit easier to see. Just, you know, know that many of you attached documents, which we really appreciate. It gives the council chance to review all those. So, just know that they've reviewed those, so if you can hit the high points. And what we're looking for certainly is new information, not repeating information that you gave us the last time. But again, we're looking for new information. And certainly, I'm just asking all of us to please bring our best selves to the conversation. And we look forward to hearing what, what new information that you have for us. So, but first, we will hear from Faith Reeves, Sustainability Coordinator.
Good evening, council and mayor. I appreciate this opportunity to give you an update report about the resilient, the Resilient Action Committee's activities and my activities since the last time we met. The last time we met, I presented you with a summary of our resilient action plan, the Fairfield's resilient action plan, that the RAC has been working on, the Resilient Action Committee has been working on since November of 2023. You'll see a rundown of the process that we've been working on over the last month, which is the, the selection of early implementation projects. And so, on that first page, you'll see what we've been doing. We've gone through the process of synchronizing our, all of our RAC activities between the subcommittees, which we have six subcommittees, just as a reminder, Foodways, Buildings and Energy, Private Land Stewardship, Land Use, Waste Management, and Enterprise Solutions and Community Connections. Each of the subcommittees, or actually three of the subcommittees, have went through the selection process and are working on or have finished their early implementation framework. I've got just a few bullet points that you'll see in the first two pages there. And in the back, you'll see the frameworks for the three subcommittees who have gone through their framework selection process, their early implementation projects. Foodways is headlong into working for funding around a local food system barriers assessment. So, we're looking to inquire from our consumers and our producers. We want to know, how can we get more local food into the, into the kitchens of our local consumers? So, we've got a grant submitted for that assessment. We're also looking at another USDA grant, a local food promotions program grant, that I'll update you on the next time I'm with you. We are, we are working on a Grow a Road program, which is a, is a food donation, a fresh produce donation program. That's something that we're building educational materials around. And we're going to build on the home gardening support program materials that we have already active in the community. So, we're going to, for Foodways, do assessments and education primarily for this summer session into the fall and build materials that we can deploy early next spring. Buildings and Energy is working on healthy neighborhoods. And so, we are going to work on getting those inventories completed for our substandard homes and our underutilized residential buildings and vacant lots. We're going to work on finding funding or seeking program collaboration around critical home repair activities. We are very interested in seeing that move forward. We've submitted two grants, as you know, in the past, because you were the primary applicant for both of those grants, two EPA grants, that the funding was pulled back by the, the current administration. And so, we're going to keep seeking that funding for critical repair around owner-occupied homes and, you know, substandard homes in our community. You'll see that work plan. Enterprise Solutions and Community Connections, we are actively looking to identify, how can we create a very fluid Fairfield feed for our community? How can we get the information out? What is the best way? And so, we want to work with our media channels that exist, our influencers that exist, our, our promoters that exist, kind of identify where they are, assess what they are doing, who are they getting their reach out to, what's been successful? Get an inventory built around that. Try to understand what other communities are doing in that realm. You'll see the work plan. There are, each one of these subcommittees have anywhere from eight to 12 actions that are on their little work plans. Actively right now, we know we got our, our cans delivered last week, so we've got a kicking the can out of the landfill. That's a waste management project for our waste management team. We've sought funding to support the print and, and the event insurance for a workshop. We've, I've learned how to use the Waterbill stuffer. And over the last four weeks, I've sent out over 4,000 of these lovely inserts in the Waterbill. And we've got articles in the source and in the union around how the community can deal with those cans. And we also, by suggestion, have been pursuing nonprofit funding for the RAC. I'll update you on that next time we meet.
Great.
Thank you. Thanks, Faith.
Very well done, right at five minutes. So, now everybody knows what the drill is. And again, I can see a lot of people have done some research. We appreciate it. You've spent some time here. So, again, we're looking for new information. And so, next up is James Sinton.
Thank you. So, I live in Ward 1. And as a lifetime ecologist, I recently organized a detailed survey of the health of Walton Lake and its immediate surroundings. Contrary to the 1964, '65, and 2002 reports, we found the lake to be surprisingly healthy with a wide and abundant spectrum of wildlife and plant species, including one or more possibly endangered mussels. The three-foot-deep water clarity supports high levels of abundant biodiversity, indicating a healthy and stable ecosystem with water quality indicators, including native frogs, bass, clams, swans, and aquatic birds, all of them sensitive to pollutants, turbidity, and nutrient overloads, which are common in unhealthy lakes. Their presence suggests the lake maintains clean, oxygen-rich waters with stable temperatures and pH conditions. Biodiversity and food web integrity is another one. The presence of top predators, bald eagles, ospreys, bass, insectivores like bats, swallows, and frogs, herbivores like geese and deer, omnivores like raccoons and skunks, and even carnivores, foxes and weasels, points to a fully functioning and layered food web around the lake. Habitat diversity, aquatic vegetation, emergent wetlands, riparian buffer zones, and adjoining woodlands, all appear healthy, providing the structural diversity needed to sustain this array of wildlife. Then, low human disturbance. The continued presence of shy and habitat-sensitive species like beavers, bobcats, bald eagles, and transient species like trumpeter swans implies that the area is relatively undisturbed by pollution, excessive development, or shoreline modification. The lake provides essential habitat to a wide range of species across multiple trophic levels, and the environmental conditions support sensitive species known to be indicators of ecological integrity and clean water. These healthy lake indicators include, and this is powerful, local stakeholders and visitors who enjoy and celebrate the lake's beauty. All the homeowners around the lake, and many have lived there for more than a decade, happily confirm their ongoing appreciation and delight in the lake's health, as do golfers, boaters, and fishermen. This is an established indicator of lake health. Water clarity and naturally resolving algal blooms, another indicator. Absence of fish kills or die-offs in the lake for more than 25 years. Presence of healthy, possibly endangered native mussel species on the lake bed, among the most threatened animals in existence, according to the Iowa DNR, with Iowa hosting nine endangered and six threatened species. Also, healthy populations of non-invasive amphibian species, a key indicator of lake health. Five non-invasive species of fish, especially the sensitive largemouth bass with small heads and large bellies indicative of good health, for which the lake is famous across southeast Iowa. All these point to excellent lake health. Fifteen species of desirable native mammals, including two species of bass, are reported around the lake. This group includes most of the wild mammal species found in Jefferson County, indicating an attractive, healthy local ecosystem. At least four species of snakes, including two water snakes, are observed around and in the lake. At least two species of turtle seen in and around the lake strongly indicate a healthy lake ecosystem. Sixteen species of waterbirds and raptors are seen in and around the lake, including the rare and very sensitive osprey, only recently restored after becoming extinct in Iowa. The restoration involved hundreds of volunteers, and last year, only 47 fledglings were hatched across the whole of the state. And we have them there at Walton Lake. Another rare bird at Walton Lake is the green heron. Thirty-six smaller native bird species live around the lake. This is a high percentage of all the smaller bird species found in Jefferson County. So, you can see that Walton Lake is biologically rich and ecologically stable, and we're very grateful to you for this opportunity to explore the wonders of Walton Lake together.
Great, thank you, James. Appreciate it. Best one? And you can, can you remind us which ward you live in?
One.
You're in one?
Yeah.
Are you on the lake?
No.
No? Okay, great.
Unfortunately. So, I was looking forward to sparing-
Ward one's that one, sorry.
Pardon?
Never mind.
I, I was looking forward to sparing us all another five-minute address until nature or God threw a dead fish in my path. The message to my nose was unmistakable, so I'm here to, to deliver it. Literally, I was walking along Mint Boulevard one week ago when I found myself gagging on the smell of carrion. I almost reversed course, but was curious to know what creature was producing this extraordinary stench. A hundred feet later, I discovered a 10-inch dead fish buzzing with flies and emitting an almost unbearable odor. Not 10,000 dead fish in a drained lake, just one. The creature likely dropped from the talons of some raptor trying to escape a mob of birds. I wonder, what is the council's plan and what is its budget for remediating the reek of countless rotting carcasses or for locating local homeowners during the time it takes for these carcasses to decompose? No one can be expected to spend weeks stewing in sulfur and ammonia-rich compounds such as putrescine, cadaverine, scattle, and other volatile chemicals typical of rotting fish and, by most accounts, hell. Also, city council paints a picture of restoration, which seems to me to hold little water. At its June 9th meeting, the DNR estimate for restoring the lake was given at 15 to 20 years, with an estimate of five years until the biology of the lake would support successfully restocking its fish. One week later, at a- One week later, at a committee meeting, that estimate was dismissed as referring to an improved lake rather than one restored to mere-current levels, and there was palpable excitement about restocking the fish as early as November of this year. All concerns about the time required to build up the lake's biology to levels where it could sustain such fish were waved away with talk of using the northern finger to maintain a seed population of aquatic species with which to re-inoculate Walton Lake proper. But common sense struggles to keep pace with this fishtail. The lake's watershed fingers are too shallow to ensure survival of species trapped there in the case of a hot, dry spell. Since the ecology of an oversized puddle is different from the ecology of a lake capable of sustaining desirable fish species, expecting to use one ecological niche to support another and jump-start it seems a stretch. Either way, has the city budgeted for the cost of this Hail Mary pass? Nor is there evidence the city has planned or budgeted for the costs of restoring the lake to its current levels of vitality, let alone the time and cost required to improve it to whatever standard is being used to justify killing it today. The cost of a full restoration, typically in the millions of dollars and lasting decades, requires community awareness, community support as much as 35%, and cost-sharing via public-private partnerships. Also, since the agency tasked with overseeing such restoration has a long waitlist, it seems prudent to ensure this space is fully covered before proceeding to drain the lake. Leaving it all to chance then invoking unforeseen costs and crisis seems fiscally and in every way irresponsible. Last, Doug Reinert admitted that it is nearly impossible to prevent reintroduction of invasive species to Iowa's lakes. Anyone managing natural resources understands that the best defense against invasives is a mature ecosystem, and that disrupting such an ecosystem throws open the gate to invaders. And yes, there will be exceptional cases where a troubled lake may lose its ability to handle invasive species and may need to be drained, but that is clearly not the case with Walton Lake. Such decisions must be made with care, with respect for the lives and dignity of all whose lives are tied to the lake, and with proper assessments. No such assessments or care have yet been extended to Walton Lake and its residents. I do thank you for this opportunity to address some of the issues which have yet to be included in a proper cost analysis for replacing the bridge over Walton Lake. Thank you.
Felicity Spalding.
There's one separate spreadsheet before the collective appendices in this, and I don't have an... Everybody, my printer ran out of ink, but... So, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak again about Walton Lake and trying to preserve it. I'm Felicity, and I'm one of the homeowners around Walton Lake. We've contacted 36 so far, and every single one has signed a petition to stop the draining of the lake, which I have here. I wish you could live on Walton Lake, because then you might understand why we see this as an act of unnecessary destruction. Morning mist curling off the water, birdsong filling the air, moonlight dancing across glassy waters, we are really blessed to live in its beauty. If you lived here, you would know it's not just a place to live, but a place where time slows and life deepens. And this is why we moved there and why we oppose your decision. Many of us are retired, and we want to spend our remaining years enjoying the lake, not living with a decimated one for years to come. Some of us, after all it's possible, may be gone before the lake is restored and reestablished. We've invested millions into our homes collectively and contribute $230,000 a year in taxes. We are stakeholders. That none of you have contacted us before making this decision is quite a shocking oversight to me. Out of all of its impacts, this decision affects us most. We understand that mistakes happen. What's harder to understand is a refusal to reconsider, even when new facts and new perspectives emerge. There are, after all, win-win solutions. It's tacked now to the overlooked costs the city may incur under the current plan and how they compare to a practical alternative that is significantly cheaper. Throughout this next section, my statements refer to details you can find in the spreadsheet and accompanying appendices. Reviewing the council's decision, it appears it was based on an overstated water depth. In truth, only a few feet of water will remain after the specified 11.5-foot drawdown. This severe volume reduction will cause widespread fish death, swarm supplies and other pests, unbearable odors, ecosystem collapse, and destroy the lake's aesthetic and recreational value for years. Cleanup and odor suppression alone could cost between $38,000 and $66,000. This figure is based on data from similar small-fish, uh, small-lake fish kills. And once again, that's in the documents I gave you, the analysis. Lime and chemical treatments can harm amphibians and insects, reducing biodiversity even after refilling. And those same chemicals may be toxic to us, the residents who live closest to the lake. Has the city got insurance to cover any medical liabilities in such situations? And if the smell makes our homes unlivable, will the city cover relocation costs? These alone could amount to around $100,000, again on the spreadsheet. And there's more. The golf course depends on lake water. Realizing this, the city's last-minute idea to tap a nearby fire hydrant could total at least $6,000. This figure includes connection fees, and a water cost of really is just an estimate because I've no idea. Let's say 1/10 of the retail valuable, uh, value of creating potable water. There's also a question of the impact on our water pressure. Have these issues been investigated? There's some emails relating to that in the, also in the appendices. Even without relocation, the estimated total for the city's causeway COVID system now sits around $285,000. If relocation is needed, that could jump to $385,000. Why take this risk when a proven alternative exists? One verified aluminum bridge six foot wide and capable of carrying golf carts, 88 feet long, capable of reaching across easily, costs $182,000 all up. This is $100,000 less than the current plan. It's built to last, serves the golf's course, golf courses' needs, and doesn't require draining the lake. This alternative was submitted before any decision was finalized, and a basic investigation would have shown its feasibility. Why not choose a win-win solution that benefits both city and the community? Let's not view sunk costs as permanent obstacles. Spending $60,000 to exit a contract shaped by incomplete and incorrect information is better than overspending by $100,000 or more.
Felicity.
You preserve, I've just got two sentences. You preserve the ecosystem and increase council's good standing in the community. We ask for an immediate pause, a reassessment of alternatives, and open consultation with stakeholders, and I thank you so much for your service here and having to deal with all of us, and, and for your thoughtful consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Ed Neuss.
I want to thank everyone again. This has been quite the journey we've all been on, and amazing things have happened. People that I never met before came forward, and we have these beautiful relationships now. The love of the lake, which, you know, we're fearful of it being gone, it, what it's done is it's shown how much more deeply we love the lake and how much more deeply we care about the animals and all the species. So, there's been a lot of great things, and, and I see a lot of really good things coming out of all of this. I still see that. Now, I did, I did give you some documents that I'm sure you've looked at. I think it's clear that, first of all, that we have a protected right to speak against the policies of the city council. That's a First Amendment right, and it shouldn't be threatened against, and I'll just stop there. I know that we were, Melanie was asked to provide to the DNR the worst-case scenario if the lake was drained, so that's when the second DNR permit, uh, drawdown permit was issued. The problem is there was significant errors in that report, and I think I have that all because I've given you a copy of that petition to the DNR, the second petition. The first petition failed to even admit there was any litoral rights to the landowners. So that was faulty, and then, so then we filed, had to file the second one, and that one claimed there'd be 12 and 1/2 feet water left after the lake, lake was drained 11 and 1/2 feet. That's another major error. I did do some research. There is liability to the city if errors of this nature are made, and you have 36, out of 36 homeowners that have already said they really don't want to see this happen. So, that's just put in there for your review. It is true, you have been given copies of formal concepts of bridges that could be used that are long enough and less costly, so you have that. You can't say you don't have it anymore. Now, there's some actually really good news that I want to talk about. I gave you a document called "The Advantages of Holding Off for Now and Draining the Lake", and I just want to read it to you very quickly. Melanie has stated publicly that they don't even need to start draining the lake until August 8th, they can fulfill the existing contract with Drish and wait until August the 8th. This delay doesn't interfere with the Drish contract fulfillment. This delay would save $130,000 gallons of treated water every day. This helps to avoid depletion of the Jordan Well, which is extremely expensive, as you know. This also allows time for the DNR to complete their due diligence and the administrative review process. It also allows homeowners to enjoy the fullness and splendor of the lake during this timeframe. It further allows time to confirm the actual depth of the lakes and how much water would remain if the lake is in fact drained at 11 and 1/2 feet, as planned. Once it is confirmed what the actual depth of the lake would be if it drained, it can then be determined what the actual environmental impact would be to the fish, amphibians, and other lake-dependent species. We can't even say that now because the information that's been given has not been accurate. Further, it would allow time to determine the effect on the, on the homeowners, the golf course members and the public. Further, it would allow time for interested citizens to more fully research the likely costs of golf cart bridges, alternatives. And it also would allow the homeowners and the city to complete a, a request for proposal on just the golf cart alternative. We are in a catch-22. We can't say what it is because the request proposal hasn't been done. So that could be done. The main thing that I want to thank Melanie for is an engineering report that revealed the actual history of the relationship between the city and the Walton Club. So it was 1931 when the first lease was entered into. That lease lasted for 84 years, and during that 84 years, it was entirely the responsibility of the golf club to maintain the bridge and look after it, not the city. It wasn't until 2015, one or 10 years ago, that the city assumed responsibility. The good news is that 10-year contract is up in December of this year. That provides us with an opportunity to renegotiate between the city and the golf club. The city, obviously, the golf club has an interest in getting a new lease, that's clear. They want a new lease. The city has an interest in getting rid of this responsibility for this bridge. Here's the idea. The city, a new lease would be drafted. The city agrees to pay $134,000 only to the Walton Club for the bridge of their desire. The Walton Club agrees to complete their own design, and that would save the city $100,000. Drish, who's a member of the golf club, from everything I've been told, I'll only take one more second if I could, uh, I've been told he's a wonderful, reasonable man, who's very chilled out, and he's a member of the golf club. I believe that the golf club would be very happy to talk to Drish about this, their new idea that's going to make them happy and everyone else happy, and he'd say, "Fine, I'll just do the work on the new project." So, the only thing that we're missing is the authority to negotiate with the lease. I suggested that John Morrisey could negotiate this lease, and he said he hasn't, doesn't have the authority. So, if we could merely consider giving John the authority to negotiate a new lease, which has to happen anyway, because the December 25th is coming up, we can see what might happen. It might solve everyone's problems, save the city $100,000, remove all of this. One more thing, the homeowners and this committee have already raised about 1/3 of the money beyond the $134,000. We would agree to raise the rest of the funds for the golf club, which means the golf club gets it for free. They get the bridge of their choice for free, they get a new lease, the city saves $100,000. That's the idea, and I would just like for John to be able to pursue that. That's all I'm asking.
Okay. Thank you, Ed. Appreciate that. Um... John, so, I just would like to make one point really clear that we've repeated several times is, and we, we know the numbers that have come with this bridge, however, I will say that it has been our engineers', um, talking point that no matter what bridge we put in, we may have to lower the lake to put those piers in, otherwise, we have to understand that what's sinking there would be, you know, how much silt is there? So, you know, again, I'm not an engineer, I'm kind of repeating, so this idea that we, just, you just don't have to lower the lake at all, I'm not sure is accurate, and I know you people, several of you believe that is the case, that you can just put it in, and, but, we don't know that that really, at this point, is the God's truth. So, just a little thing that I want to mention that seems to be, you know, a difference of opinion, but again, that's, that's not my specialties. So, appreciate it. John, before, I mean, I, I'd like to hear from the council if that's something they want to, number one, either give you authority to do, start talking about that lease. I would like to say that I think we are looking at, and, um, the delay process, I mean, we have been talking about it at City Hall, and a conversation has not been had yet with Drish, but it's, it's not off the table, let's just say that, and, uh, looking at timelines. So, John, do you want to speak to some of the points that have been here general tonight before we go on to Ed here?
Yeah, I, um, first of all, I want to say that sort of going backwards on this, Ed alludes to threats about his right to speak before us. We've had four meetings in a row where I haven't seen anybody deprived of free speech in the sense that this council has ever allowed public forum. So I think that's a bunch of horse feathers. As far as Ed coming here and telling us that the city is ignoring fact, the city, from the very first of these meetings, tried to present the situation that the public record supports. There's a 12-page attachment to the things that were done for the council when we were talking about the first two sessions that has to do with the abstract of title out at Walton. Also, as far as the way Ed has represented the group, he's an effective speaker. I don't take anything away from Ed, I've known him as a colleague for probably 35 years. But the other side of that, Ed, is you've been representing in your emails that you're not doing any of this as a lawyer, and it sure looks to me like you're doing it as a lawyer, even though you're not licensed as a lawyer and you're not insured as a lawyer. You've been representing on your emails, which are on Neuss Law Office stationary about half the time, that you're doing this as a single person, but then you're here representing 35 lake house owners, as far as I know. So, there's a contradiction in there very clearly. Secondly, in the last few days, the city's received a seven-page draft lawsuit from you, which is something that lawyers do. So if you're not here as a lawyer, don't hand us seven pages of litigation. I mean that, Ed, it's just not...
I respond.
Yeah, no, you can't.
You're making a public, you're making a public presentation here, and I should be able to respond.
Well, no, this isn't a debate, Ed, this is... This is my chance to say something, and it deserves to be said as far as why these meetings are going to go on probably again and again into the future. And as far as some of the stuff that's been misrepresented to the public here, it needs to be sorted. As far as I'm concerned, why all these people have a belief and have been made to feel that the lake is going to be gone, that is just not true. And I don't think DNR would say anything different to us as far as that lake going on into another year or two, not being restored to the lake that people look out in the morning over coffee. It may not be the same lake ecologically for a while, but also, I've been a fan of the lake for 50 years. And a lot of the ecological stuff that Mr. Sutton talked about tonight, we all know that. But I also know the water snakes, they're going to go over behind the second causeway. They're still going to be out on the lake even if the lake was bone dry. The shorebirds are going to go up to the fingers. Those animals that live out there, they're not going to go very far. A lot of the ecology's still going to be there. So, you know, I don't want to have the misunderstanding that DNR, for some reason, is completely out of the loop on this. I think DNR has considered that going forward. And I think that as far as our engineer, she's been in communication with DNR a number of times. I've had the opportunity of conversations with DNR. Our city administrators had opportunities for that. But right now, what is being ignored is what I have been expressing since the beginning, public forums for this. Every one of the homeowners out there, they got an abstracted title to a new subdivision that the city created to resolve something with DNR that needed to be resolved. Reference was made to the reports of water quality back in the mid-'60s and also in 2002, I believe it was, which were not positive reports. And the city did the subdivision to satisfy that. So if Mr. Sutton doesn't feel that those reports were accurate, I'll respect his opinion as far as him saying that. But at the same time, the reason you have a subdivision out there is because the DNR didn't think so, and the city council didn't think so. And when we fix this so that you could have a subdivision with beautiful location and beautiful homes, it would work going into the future for generations. This council and all the past councils have always believed in that lake, and that's being missed as a point in this whole thing. Every one of your abstracted titles shows that the city has always owned the lake. And the city, except for the control and dominion that DNR has over them, the city has always made the decisions about the lake. Other than that, there's also a large easement around the entire lake that allows the city always access for purpose of dealing with it for what it is. It was built man-made, it's not a natural lake. It was built as a surface water storage facility for part of our reservoir system for potable water. It still is, but it's not used that way right now. It's a sitting body of water. And there's nothing wrong with that being a beautiful city body of water, but it's still subject to DNR monitoring. So make no mistake, DNR's still in the picture always on this, and the city treats it as a part of an asset called the Water Utility. So when we talk about it and who should make the decisions, every time we've had somebody at the podium that questioned something like that, I asked them, don't you think this is a decision ultimately for the city council to make? And I still believe that to this day, and I think it's a very defensible position. As far as the abstracted titles, they also, for every one of the homeowners out there, you have a group of multi-pages of covenants concerning what you can and cannot do in the lake. You cannot put a dock in the lake. You cannot swim in the lake. You are doing things that DNR frowns on any place where there's a reservoir that has the potential for being part of a water system. And, you know, that's, should be common sense and should be obvious to all of us. And I don't think any of us are troubled by the idea that maybe you can't swim in it. And maybe DNR, at the time that we did this back at the subdividing, approved the covenants as being consistent with their requirements for the lake being kept pristine. And that lake, right now, as far as the quality of the water in it, you'll get a variety of opinions, all the way from worst-case scenario, that it's full of under-the-surface tangled vegetation that thrives because of sunlight, and some of the green algae bloom that isn't so green and isn't so good, and other kinds of things that are in the water that make the water less than pristine. I don't think DNR is going to give you the same glowing report that Mr. Sutton did. And I don't think that DNR is going to be troubled if there's some adjustments in the level of the lake that ultimately result in parts of the lake having to be restored. But that's just my opinion from being around for 35 years and watching this every year with DNR over our shoulder. At times, we had threats by DNR that we were going to be fined $10,000 a day. That would have been just as unpopular to our taxpayers as anything else that's come up in these hearings the last four times we've had them. So believe me, I'm not trying to beat up on people that have gotten out there and enjoyed the view, enjoyed the new home site, helped us with the cost of things that were done back in 2000 to 2005 to make that the place that it is. You got a new bridge, you got a new central water system, you got a new central septic or sewer system, and all of that's going to last for generations. So's the lake. Nobody said anything from this council, nobody said anything from the engineering standpoint of that lake being gone tomorrow or gone, anything like long-term. See, I think that's a major deception that's been put on some of you as far as losing your lake. I think it's unfair, I think it's distortion, I think it's something also that leads me to one other thing I want to say, and that is that we had an engineering effort by both our city engineer, who is very competent, contrary to people attacking her when they didn't have any other fact to throw at her, about her skills and her competence. And we had a second engineering opinion on this from a recognized long-term firm that's worked with the city as far as that same water project out at Walton, and the ongoing water purposes related to that lake. They both, to some extent, misjudged the level of drainage that would take place. Regardless of that, as far as whether that's outcome determinative about the lake or not, when the lake can be easily worked on, the lake can be easily restored over a period of time, there are different experiences around this county out in the agricultural community. Every year, where dams are broken out, water bodies are rebuilt, water bodies are refilled, DNR restocks them, and there is no reason to doubt that on a larger scale, that wouldn't be the experience at Walton Lake. If you go over to Lake Geode, you'll see that there was a lake drain 2019, right in the middle, there was COVID. They went back to it and they reopened it in 2023, and you have a beautiful restored lake over there with good fishing in it. There's no reason to think that couldn't be Walton. And there's no reason to think that Walton's going to be lost at any point in the future. The council's still fully behind the lake. The situation as far as the control of the lake has to stay the way it is in your property titles. You are owners of beautiful, light lakeside lots that look out on a lake that is actually owned by the city, maintained by the city for purposes other than a recreational lake, but which happens to have the beautiful additions to its usefulness that includes recreation and just plain aesthetics. So as far as the lake itself, there isn't anybody in this room that doesn't want the best for the lake. And I'm tired of hearing about somebody saying that we're destroying the lake. This thing is still a situation where I think if you had DNR at the podium right now, they would say that this will more likely than not be an improved lake by the time we're all done with this project. So I want to be clear about that. As far as the council putting me in a position of authority to negotiate anything, I negotiate every week, every month, and so forth. But part of the reason that I told Mr. Noyes I don't have the authority to do that is some of this is stuff that the council really can't delegate away. That's the other reason I don't have the authority for it, and that is that the council has to make the ultimate decisions about property that the city owns. And that's not a rare concept. It would get the city in trouble if they tried to do some things differently than they're supposed to do it. In this situation, I know Mr. Noyes referred to a catch-22 as far as getting around some things like the RFP. RFP is a request for proposals as far as what things are going to cost. The city can't avoid doing the bidding process that it has to go through. It can't avoid going through the open meetings required, notices that happen every time the city meets. And it can't avoid the bidding processes that went on as far as the actual bid that was allowed in the contract we accepted. And the city is very much in an awkward position as far as in any way reneging on a contract that's already signed. I have to defend the city if they're sued for that. But I also can tell you one more thing about this, and that is that if the seven-page litigation document that was presented us last week were to be filed in district court, it would open the floodgates for things against you that you haven't been told by the man who is presenting it but says he's not doing it as a lawyer. What you're going to look at then is, we don't have any control over the contractor, who will be breached. He's got his own rights to his own representation and his own claims as far as that contract being, in many ways, damaged or interfered with. That's not an unrealistic assessment. That's the type of case that I've been in court many times in the past as far as interference with contracts. Another part of this has to do with the situation where you, as individual owners, you want to make a deal with the city, but right now, as I look at it, you are what Mr. Noyes would characterize as a loosely organized group of owners with stakes in this thing. You are a loosely organized group of owners, and part of the problem with that is none of you probably are prepared or insured or represented to the point where if you become crossclaimants or crossdefendants or counterclaimants or counterdefendants, do you want this coming at you individually? That is probably where the benefit to you would be if you were a homeowners association or you had an organization that could stand up and speak for you and ensure you and defend you. So I'm telling you that as a friend. I don't want to be in a position where you get picked on individually, and I don't think any of you have had that drilled into you at this point. So from my perspective, that's about as much as I'm going to say right now, except that the city, they're perfectly capable of deciding if they want me to negotiate, and I'm perfectly capable, I think, of seeing the different ways this could work. I think what you're probably going to do is get partway where you want to be. I'm hopeful you don't file litigation and Mr. Noyes doesn't pull the trigger on what he's put in our lap. I'm also hopeful that you listen as we go forward, because there are other parts of this that have to do with other people's money, other people's programs for doing things like the lake restoration, the lake restocking, the other things that have to do with the lake resuming being a high-quality lake. And all of that can happen even with a bridge that the council chooses as its bridge instead of your bridge. The council's still perfectly within its rights to decide to build a much different, a much higher strength, a much better enduring bridge than a cart bridge. It won't be wrong of the council to do that, any more than it was wrong for the council to do a bigger bridge on the spillway dam when the 20, or excuse me, 2002 to 2005 subdividing was being done out there. That bridge turned out to be exactly what you needed. My suspicions are that going forward, we may not have a crystal ball right now, but you'll be glad you did more on this instead of less on this, and the lake will be fine in the end. Nobody wants the lake to be gone, and nobody really wants there to be any litigation. So be clear about that. I'm more than happy to talk with any of you about this individually, or to negotiate with a group of you, or decide exactly what your standing and position is as a body of homeowners. But at this point, we still have some situations that would put you over a barrel, regardless of whether the city has some liability in this. The other side of the case puts you in an awkward situation too. I don't think that's been explained to you enough. So from that standpoint, I don't want to pull any triggers on the other side if the city has to defend a litigation. I'd rather be sitting and talking about something that's a mediated resolution of all of this. I think the council would be delighted if there were some in-betweens as far as some of this. But the council cannot delegate its authority to you, and the council cannot not make the choice about what to do with the property it owns out there. Council still owns the lake, the abstract still says that the easements and so forth are binding, and that the covenants are binding. So I'm going to just keep coming back to that every time there's a discussion. And frankly, at this point, I'm looking at many of you, and you've heard enough. That's not where I want this thing to end though. There's more to be said, and the council got an opportunity to say it next. But I want to be very clear about what the legal posture is on this that I see. So I've said enough, I hope it was clear. I'm not trying to frighten any of you as far as your positions as homeowners. I think you're all very much beneficiaries of something that was the best intentions of the council back when the subdivision was done. It's been a pleasure to watch the subdivision turn into what you live in, and it'll be just as good a lake after this project as going into this project. That's what I believe.
So, and I just want to say that I do believe the council hears you, and I think they understand that if we could push this project back a little bit, it's good for the golf course. It's good for the people who live there. So please be patient while we work through this. And, you know, council, I was thinking maybe the lease could start, be worked on by the property committee while we're in this process. Is that something that you would like to move forward at this point?
We should start looking at it as soon as possible. We don't have much time, so December will come up very quickly.
May I ask a question, though? Like, even if we work on the lease, and even if we are no longer responsible for maintaining the bridge, if we own the lake, what is our liability there? I mean, if we, yeah, that's my question. I don't know.
And I think that's something that needs to be hashed out, and I would suggest we do it in the property committee. My guess, or my best guess, and I did talk to Mr. Noyes last night about the history of the lake, and, you know, an educated guess was that in 2015, Walton Club was probably in a more lean... in a more lean year, and it was getting difficult for them financially, and they saw that a bridge getting older, and they really don't have the money to maintain it, and so that's why it probably came to the city. And Melanie's going to say something, go ahead. And then I also thought that because the lake belongs to the city, that anything on top of that lake should belong to the city, so I figured liability's part of it, too, but I think that should be flushed out, but maybe you have the answer, Melanie.
Could someone explain why the Walton Club has insurance on the bridge and a liability associated with that insurance if we're responsible?
So a couple things. That the statement about the change in the lease, that was something that was very obvious to me, and I found interesting, unless anyone was on the council at that time and wants to understand the reasoning, or remembers the reasoning. One possible explanation is because the roads were dedicated at the time, and that the statement as far as the city taking ownership of all of the roads and bridges might not have been intended to incorporate this bridge at all, but because of the language, we can't determine whether it was intended to at all. Because when things get annexed into the city, the roads become the city's. And so the word "bridge" was probably added in there because of the bridge over the spillway, and that was a very hot topic when the subdivision came about. So that is also a theory. This could be an unintended consequence of annexing the area. The other thing I want to point out is when the, whether we, as we negotiate, this came to City Hall by the board, and at the time, the board did not realize that the city had responsibility for this at all. They actually called it and wanted me to set up a meeting with the Economic Development Committee to see if there is any way they could get lost funds or any sort of city contribution to help them pay for the bridge. And so before I sent it off to the Economic Development Committee, I thought, well... And Doug and I, Doug Riner and I, talked about it, and I said, "Well, what does the lease say?" And that's when we discovered, oh, it's our responsibility, not theirs. So, you know, that could answer the question as to why they carry the liability insurance. They thought they had the responsibility. So there are a lot of things that, up until 2015, that's the way it had always been done, and then come 2015, maybe the lease never got changed, or the insurance policy never got changed. Things like that, that had just been renewed year after year. I can't necessarily answer that, but those are some theories. So regardless of... I just want to bring that perspective, that the board was asking us for some assistance regardless on how we move forward.
When did the board ask?
When it first came to us, like, in April of last year.
Property committee over a year ago.
Well, before I brought it to property committee, the board had come to me saying, "Hey, can we meet with Economic Development about getting some sort, or ways and means about getting some lost money," or something like that.
This is approximately April last year?
Yeah. It's the very first contact that I had with the board.
So, council, would you be open to moving this situation, moving the lease, and start talking about past history and moving forward? And in the meantime, we'll, you know, we'll keep working on, we're waiting on DNR permit and working on possibly a delay here a little bit, so we have more water out there for the golf course, and residents can enjoy through the summer. Anyway, so that's just an idea, that we go ahead and move that and start looking at it and working on it.
Yeah, I'd move that we send it to property committee?
It should go to the property committee.
Property committee, yeah.
Okay. Is there a second? Second? Okay, moved by Esti, second by Florinoy, to move the Walton lease to the property committee. Any discussion? Hearing them, please call a roll.
Esti?
Yes.
Florinoy?
Yes.
Tuhill?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Grove?
Yes.
Great, thank you. And, oh, yes.
So I do have a question. So what does that mean in terms of the process that there is a contract signed with Trish Construction at this point? What happens to that?
This is just the lease, not anything to do with the bridge or the contract or any of that.
So I think there's going to be some discussions with Trish about timeframe, because we're waiting, we're waiting anyway on the DNR permit. So there'll just be more discussions, and we'll keep you informed as things move forward. We do have, just to let people know, I hate to call you guys out in the back of the room, but we do, we do have a couple DNR representatives. Do you want to share anything tonight from what you've heard, or?
Sure. Chad Dolan, I'm the District Fisheries Management Biologist.
You want to come up and at least introduce yourselves?
Tyler.
Make yourselves known.
So here's the mic, but Chad Dolan, District Fisheries Management Biologist.
Tyler Stubbs, I'm the Community Fisheries Biologist for the state out of Des Moines.
So I've, as you know, I've had a lot of discussions with you, Doug. But anyway, you know, there's a lot of questions about damaging the ecology of the system and whatnot. Certainly, you know, we drain water, and we drain 11 and 1/2 feet, you know, as I've said, and I've been honest with you. I mean, especially if this happens in the summer, and we could have dead fish. I mean, that's absolutely probably going to happen. However, you know, what I've discussed with folks is how to go about doing that drawdown effectively, so that we draw that water down gradually. And, you know, it just kind of makes sense that fish are going to move with the receding water, right? And if they move with the receding water, we can minimize the depth of fish, especially if we're able to maintain a pool eight to 12 feet deep, which is what we've discussed. Now, I'll fully acknowledge, you know, and I've been honest about this, we do not know what the depth of the lake looks like. Now, simply because there has been sediment deposition over time, that is a reality and it's fact. You know, so is there some risk involved on not knowing exactly what that depth is? Well, sure there is, you know. Worst-case scenario, it's not as deep as you are thinking, and we have more fish die. Is that the worst thing in the world that could happen? What I can show in some of those papers that fell on the floor, what that is, is fish data. We're a data-driven agency, scientifically collected data, data dating back to 1967. Last survey was conducted in 2002. It's just looking, it's about every 20 years that we've been in there. Why the long delays? We don't have very good access, right? It's hard for us to get in there. We need tractors, you know, multiple people, a small army in order to get in. Else we would be in there more frequently. But despite only being able to monitor it and survey it about every 20 years, what we can see over that time span is degradation, resulting from sedimentation, nutrient input, the introduction of aquatic invasive species. And they're there. Common carp is one, bigmouth buffalo is another. They are causing damage to the system. And those were two species that I didn't hear much of.
What kind of damage do they cause the system?
So common carp is a species that is a bottom feeder, and essentially, it's going to root around in the sediment. It's going to resuspend that sediment, and that's going to add to cloudy water, or what we term as turbidity. Why is that a problem? Because all your desirable sport fishes, like your largemouth bass, your bluegills, et cetera, are sight feeders. They've got to be able to see in order to feed effectively. And we know via the data that they are not feeding effectively. In fact, we have indices that help us measure whether a fish is in good condition or not, and we know that largemouth bass and bluegill are species that are not in good condition. I would turn them as starving a little bit at this point, probably, because they're not effective at capturing their food or their prey.
In Walton Lake, you mean?
In Walton Lake, yes, yes. So, yeah, it, in my mind, you know, I'm going to be honest with you again, like, we have a lot of fish data. Do we have information specifically about things like sediment depth? Do we know how much sediment or flocculent loose sediment we have in the upper reaches of the lake? We do not. That's something where if we had access, we would be able to tell.
You said there was a second. There's two invasive species.
The second is bigmouth buffalo.
Okay.
Okay, that one's a little bit different in that it's a plankton worm, but why that's an issue is essentially that particular species is going to feed on plankton, which is a food source for a lot of our young sport fishes. So in turn, if you've got a big-bodied species, and bigmouth buffalo get very large, are consuming those plankton, they are taking it from, you know, essentially, small sport fishes that critically depend on it when they're very little. If it's not there, they starve to death. Essentially, those fish don't, what we call, recruit very well. So, you know, maybe they make it to juveniles, maybe they don't. If they do, do they make it to adulthood and really become part of the population, part of that healthy population?
What are sport fishes?
Sport fishes would be the things that people like to capture or catch. So largemouth bass, bluegills, croppies, depends on where you are. Walton Lake doesn't have them, but, you know, other places, muskies, you know, walleyes. So anything like that that people really desire to go out and catch.
Chad, can you clarify, the sediment is probably why we didn't know the levels of the lake accurately?
Sure.
Like, the reason the levels were so inaccurate is because there's so much sediment that has come off of the...
Off the landscape, so, yeah. No, no, that's a good question. So where is the sediment coming from? Well, off the landscape, you know, human activity, right? So we're all building things, you know, we're a highly agricultural state. There's lots of things occurring in what we call the watershed, or the land that drains into the lake, essentially, right? And that has been happening. The lake is 101 years old, and that alone should kind of, you know, raise a red flag. I mean, this was a man-made, small impoundment. That's what it is, you know? And it looks awesome, and we get some excellent recreation. It's been used for, you know, water in the path, et cetera, but, you know, small impoundments, they don't last forever, especially as that human activity ramps up.
What you said, small impoundments?
Impoundment, yeah.
Impoundments.
Impoundment. So what that means is, okay, we probably had a natural gully or valley, right? So we built the dam. So in essence, we impounded water. So as water ran from the watershed, it got stopped by the dam, okay? And that basically backed up and filled up the lake.
So do you have a plan at all to come and check the quality of the lake, or?
Yes, do we have a plan?
Is that on your schedule at this point?
Well, it's tentatively on the schedule, you know, barring the ability to access the lake. So, and that's one thing, you know, I talked to a few folks about this, is, you know, we've got a 21-foot aluminum plate boat, right? And, you know, with equipment, you know, in order to sharkfish, I don't know if any of you are familiar with that activity, but that's how we collect fish. We get out there, we put electricity in the water, we stun the fish, they float up and/or even swim towards us, and then we're able to collect them a lot easier. So as you can imagine, it's a pretty heavy boat, loaded down with generator and equipment in order to do that, dip net, multiple people, et cetera, et cetera. So essentially, we need a pretty decent ramp in order to get in. It doesn't necessarily have to be concrete, but, you know, a nice granular ramp, wide enough to allow us to get in and out. And then the other critical thing would be, once we do get into the lake, if we've got to back out 150 feet in order to hit deep water, that's problematic for us. We need, you know, a slope that'll allow us to float that boat in order to launch it as well.
Tell us a little bit more about that.
The ramp?
Yes.
Yes.
What kind of slope would need?
You got any idea what it would be up there? 13%? 13%, that's what I would say, 13. I've seen them anywhere 13 to 16% grade. 16 is getting a little steep.
The city's actually, your building one right now, it just got done, it wasn't like right in the day.
Yes, yep. Pleasant, and then you improve the one, well, Bonnefield is where they built it. Pleasantly improve what you have.
My question then is, if we could build that ramp for you?
Yes.
Could you, when would you be available to do your survey, your fish survey, and map the bottom of the lake?
Best-case scenario, if you were to build it, we could probably get in by fall. Now, obviously...
I'm sorry, when?
Fall.
Could you be more specific?
Well, a specific date and time.
How long it will take us to build it?
September, October?
Yeah, I would say September, October, but most likely probably October. And the issue being, okay, like, if you build it for me tomorrow, wouldn't be the best time to go fuck fish, right? I mean, it's awful darn hot.
Right.
You know, and that is something that we do have to take into consideration. If it stays hot like this, then we pretty much shut down fish monitoring activities because we don't want to be detrimental to the population. So fall, I think, is a reasonable timeframe that gives you a lot of time, and obviously, that would be a time of year that, you know, would be desirable to us, and the fish would appreciate it.
So if we didn't do the drawdown too much later than August?
Right.
You could potentially get in there and do your initial surveys this fall, and we could do the drawdown afterward?
If that was something that worked for you? Yeah, sure.
Well, we don't know yet, but it's just an idea that is out there.
Right, right. Well, and people talk about the smell, the benefit of doing like a drawdown later in the fall and the winter is, you know, you wouldn't have decomposing fish. But I would say this, I mean, people that were wondering about that, you know, fish decompose very quick, you know, especially in heat like this. I would say small-bodied fish, three days, they're going to be gone for all intents and purposes. Bigger-bodied fish might stick around a little bit longer, not a whole lot longer, especially, you know, in the conditions that we're dealing with now. The smell, I mean, even if we didn't have a dead fish, I would be honest, it's going to smell, and that's simply because things have been decaying in Walton Lake as well as all the other lakes in town, you know, 400, 100 years, right? And you're going to have muck on the bottom, and it is going to smell. Well, how long will it last? Well, until it kind of dries on the top. I told a few folks, I mean, it could dry on top, but don't be fooled, don't go walking on the lake. You know, we don't have an idea how much sediment is out there, but what I can attest to, throughout my career, I've worked in backwater lakes, you know, for instance, in the Mississippi River. We had tools in order to measure the depth of soft or flocculent sediment. I can tell you in places, it was easily, you know, a meter deep, so, you know, over three feet and perhaps, you know, more. I can remember, you know, situations where if you were to jump in, you'd probably go up to your chest, so. But, I mean, there are some good things happening at Walton. You've got Walton Road acts as a roadway dam, so basically, any sediment that's coming in down that arm is going to hit that dam, and, you know, most likely, it's going to settle out, and it'll have adhered nutrients that settle out as well, which is a good thing. That means that, you know, most of the stuff coming into the lake, a lot of it has been settled out in that basin, and it's not making the main lake. Does that mean none of it is? No, that doesn't mean that. The other issue is that that arm in particular, there's a good possibility that it's filled to essentially capacity. You know, once it fills up, it stops doing its job as effectively, right? So, you know, I don't know what we've got there. That's something we got to find out. Do we have two feet of water, a foot of water left? I don't know. We've got water. I can tell you that for sure. Back in 2002, we did a survey. At that point, they said it probably wasn't more than a couple feet deep up there. That was 23 years ago, you know? So who knows what it is today? Now, the same thing could be happening in that east and northeast finger. You've got another Gulf Cart Causeway, or what I would call an in-Lake Silt Dam, but it is also working to your advantage, and it is trapping sediment and nutrients behind it as well, you know? So, you know, the thing we always say, you know, like, today, we build those kind of things on purpose, like at Lake Darlin'.
Okay, can you address that question with regard to the location of the present, the expired bridge? If the culvert system went in there?
Yes.
What would be the advantages and disadvantages with regard to the larger lake?
Okay, so, you know, right now, we have a small connection there, and if the culverts aren't installed, as I was planning, we would have a connection. Certainly, we'd have water exchanging, but, you know, just being upfront and honest with you again, you know, it still, it still reduces connectivity, you know? Ideally, there just wouldn't be anything there at all. That would be the best-case scenario. Now, I realize that that may not be possible, but that would be the best-case scenario because Tyler and I, we did a tour, you know, I took him around. He hadn't been here in a long time, his office is in Des Moines, but went around the lake. It's just, it's compartmentalized, and some of those compartments are doing us a lot of good. It's compartmentalized, and some of those compartments are doing us a lot of good, right? A lot of good for the lake. The two I talked about, they're acting as sediment catchment. You know, how is that functioning now? Well, it gets people across the lake a lot quicker, for sure. But I think as the arm behind Walton Road fills up, that sediment's got to go somewhere. So it's going to come through the covert. It's probably going to hit that next dam, covert system. Maybe it doesn't stop as much as if it were a complete levee, so to speak, but it's still going to slow the movement of water down and allow sediment and nutrients to settle out. So what will happen? That particular area behind?
North.
That dam, yeah, to the north is going to fill up next.
And so that might be dredged more frequently?
Right, yes. It might need to be dredged more frequently. Now, if you get to the main basin of the lake, do we have sediment deposition? I would say probably so. Is it going to be as much as those upper reaches? Probably not. And a lot of times, when we've done lake restorations, you mentioned GEO, we didn't move all that sediment out of the main basin. What we did was reutilize it, push it up into mounds, and build fish habitat out of it, put rock on it. Depends on what we're dealing with. Some of it might be too soft, some of it might be perfect for those sort of stuff.
Okay, so here's a tough question. From an ecological point of view, which is the better model to move across a body of water, a causeway or a bridge with nothing obstructing underneath?
In my mind, because you have protection from Walton Road and your other cross levee, I would say a bridge or a structure that would not obstruct the connection.
Flow of water.
Yeah, the flow of water. Exchange of water in this case, not really necessarily flow, but a little bit. You're getting flow in from the watershed. That is draining into the lake, but make no mistake, it's not flowing like a creek or river.
Right.
So especially during heavy rain.
Thank you so much for explaining some of those things. Appreciate it. A lot of good information. And yeah, do you have something that you want to say? Last thing?
Yeah, last thing. I can just, my role with this, with cities, dealing with cities, is figure out how to pay for it. So I'm the one that will help you get grants and find grants that work with you with media and marketing and that kind of stuff with what everything chants in. So that's what my role will be.
So I'm sure we'll be having more questions and more discussions. All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Wow, lots of more information, Ben. So let's try to, we've got quite a bit of business, so let's try to wrap up these last two very quickly.
Well, before we do one, can we just address one question, one issue?
Yes.
So this conversation about a discussion between the city and the Walton Club, I'm interested in hearing the conversation, seeing what is being proposed. So could we allow that to take place anyway?
You mean what Ed was talking about?
Yeah.
Well...
I mean, it's not binding, it's just a conversation, and we'll hear what they have to say and see if anything comes of it.
I'm not sure what you're asking, and when?
Yeah.
We'll just have the conversation that John Morrissey and Ed Neuss were talking about.
We could put it on the agenda for the next session.
No.
Not now, here.
You say Walton Club. Are you talking Walton Club?
You mean the property committee.
Are you talking?
Well, the property committee could do it, I guess.
Yeah, that makes sense. Property committee could do it.
We will listen to the proposal from the Walton, or Ed, who's making this proposal? You or the Walton Club or?
Talking together.
All right, we'll just, can we have that conversation?
Obviously, it needs to get communicated to the Walton Club.
You guys speak up.
Obviously, it has to get communicated to the Walton.
Right. Have they, do they know about this proposal?
No, that's why we're not interfering.
All right, I'm just trying to understand what happened, what didn't happen, and who knows what and when and where. All right, so property committee will look at that too, I guess.
It'd be on our agenda.
Okay.
Okay, so just to be clear, what are we putting on our agenda? Tell me specifically.
So we're looking at the lease.
So I know we're going to look at the lease, but what else are we talking about?
And Ed has suggested...
A different bridge.
Well, what he wants to do, is my understanding correct, if I'm wrong, is have Walton Club take over responsibility for that bridge.
Isn't that what we're talking about with the lease?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, but then he also suggesting that let the Walton Club decide on the model, and the city will only put $134,000 in to that cost. In the Walton Club, we pick up the balance.
Gotcha.
That is the proposal.
If they're interested, we might as well hear what they have to say. That's all I'm saying. It's not binding or anything like that.
Okay, so let's move on to Mr. Ed Hipps. Ed, you've got five minutes. Can you do it in three?
Excuse me, Paul.
I'm doing seven.
Gotcha. Ed, I need you to come to the microphone.
Yeah, I'm just going to point out this. So it says enlivening communication ethos. My paper said enliven our communication ethos. Hours, hours. Since ethos is such a fancy word, I looked it up. So I'm off track of the actual bridge and the dam, the lake and all that, onto the bigger issue, which we're enjoying right now. We're all talking. These are conversations that were going to be shut off. We've got, the DNR has said some things that I don't think anybody in the room knew. So that comes out of having a good communication ethos. The ethos is defined as the character, sentiment, or disposition of a community or people considered as a natural endowment, the spirit which actuates manners and customs. Also, the characteristic tone or genius of an institution or social organization. Have we had a great communication ethos in this town? I think we're an exceptional town, and there's many things about us that are way better than average. This one doesn't seem so to me, and I think that's the beauty of this crazy situation with the lake and the bridge, is it's exposing where we can get stronger. So like a lot of things that you don't like when it's happening, you like later that it did happen because it teaches you how you had to get stronger. We are getting stronger. We are talking now. We formed last meeting by unanimous vote, an ad hoc community committee for citizen engagement. We had our first meeting at Walton Club recently, that Matt and Doug volunteered to chair. We had communication amongst about 30 people. Not everybody agreed on any things. Not even all of the people who would be called the hassling activists, if you want to call us that, agree on everything. And we all spoke compassionately, and there was an uncommon amount of compassionate listening. I felt heard in some of the things I said. I saw other people speaking with Doug and Matt afterwards in a manner that felt awesome. I'm thinking, maybe we should start having the city council meet at the Walton Club. Or at least change these fluorescent lights. So I'm really jazzed that all of us, all of us are sitting and talking and finding out things. I, as a citizen, would have never thought to call Roger Drish and find out, what's the story going on here? Are you planning on charging $60,000 if we get heard? So I don't want to say all the things that he said to me, but I'm really looking forward to when the city sits down and talks to Roger, especially before they throw out the $60,000 roadblock to having any further conversation. I think Roger's going to pleasantly surprise everybody in this room as a wonderful asset for this community. He underbid this project, he told me, specifically because he wanted to make sure this community got a good deal. That's why the next bid was something like $110,000 above his bid. So we have a miracle right there. And we've got a DNR that knows how to take care of the fish. We've got our own staff talking finally with the Walton Club and with the person in this room who knows more about that water and that lake than anybody else in the room, including the DNR, and that's the man who lives on it and takes care of it every day of his life, Larry Page. And out of the conversations that Larry has given, finally been able to give to the city, I think lots of possibilities are percolating for what we could do differently. And that's only because our communication ethos is developing and being enlivened by all of us. And I made it 17 seconds short. Thank you.
Thank you. I didn't want to hear that buzzer go off. Ron Blair. We can give you some Caribbean music or something like that.
My phone.
Okay, Ron, go ahead.
All right.
You've got five minutes.
All right. Stan Simmons, I don't know if you all know Stan, but he's 91 years old, and he's been doing soil and water conservation work here in Jefferson County and all over southeast Iowa for about 65 years. So we both have some good lake news to share with you, but it's Pleasant Lake, it's not Walton Lake. By the way, Stan is the one who developed all the practices, designed all the practices in Lake Darling and around Lake Darling. He's probably designed hundreds, if not thousands, of private and public ponds and lakes over the course of his career. The condition of the north finger of Pleasant Lake is it was silping in more and more, and we wanted to see if there's anything we could do to stop that process from happening. So Stan got permission from the landowners to go out and look at that land, and now I'm going to actually turn it over to Stan to kind of tell you what he found.
Well, actually, there were three landowners that we were dealing with, and they're all on board. And one of them, in fact, said, as long as it's water quality that we're looking at to improve, count me in, he said. So, but the other thing I want to say, that back in Pathfinder RC&amp;D days, when Dale Kraus was running it, I actually was hired to do land treatment above the city reservoirs, including Walton. And some of the terraces that you see in the drainage area on Walton, we did them at that time, and some ponds also. But that was back a few years ago. I probably about 20, not 20, but well. But the landowners are all on board. Soil conservation people will be the ones that do the design and layout, and at that time, we'll see what actually is proposed. But we've made a proposal to come up with a cost estimate, and that's, I think it's a good proposal, and whatever the finished product will be, we'll be very close to what that proposal is.
So what Stan's alluding to is, we actually, this didn't involve the city. You're strictly a beneficiary, but we work with Soil and Water Commission, or Soil and Water Board, and submitted a grant to the DNR. It was something called Protect Our Lakes, and they've approved that grant. And again, the beneficiary is the city because it's going to improve the water quality of Pleasant Lake, and they're estimating that it'll stop 150 to 200 tons of soil sediment coming into the lake each year. So that's happening, and Stan's really the one who opened all the doors.
And for those of us that have been around forever, it's number two pond, right?
Say it again?
Those of us that have been around forever, it's number two pond.
Exactly.
Always number two pond.
So any questions on that particular point?
I'm just curious, because we just talked about this, obviously, with Walton and runoff, nutrient runoff, and then sediment runoff. And so are there specific actions that landowners are taking to minimize the amount of...
That's what this grant will do.
Okay.
We'll pay 75%, landowners put in 25%, and all these different practices get put in to prevent that sediment from washing into the lake.
Okay, so the...
And I can answer, I talked to NRCS.
Oh, okay, okay.
When they're not.
Yeah, yeah, but just so that I know then, the public has to kind of be, it's a public-private partnership, so to speak. So like, the landowners have to be involved to a certain extent, to buy into it. Okay.
Absolutely, 100%.
Cool, that's awesome.
Great. Thank you very much.
Very good, thanks.
So to answer your question, I had called the NRCS regarding Walton Lake, and so as Stan mentioned, that he had done a lot of the work on the upstream areas of Walton Lake. Walton Lake is not listed as an impaired watershed, so it's not eligible for some of them. When DNR does come in and do their assessments, that may help us qualify for some of those funds. We would still be eligible for the cost share where the city could put in money and the property owners. There is some room on the Gun Club land that the city owns to do some additional improvements in that area that could do some sediment reduction on the land the city already owns. Otherwise, it would be additional private property owners. A lot of that money, like the DNR money, a lot of the NRCS state money is five years out, which is why the city really hasn't applied for these, and we appreciate Ron and Stan having a long-term goal compared to what we have in the past on the other grants.
Great, thank you, thank you. Okay, so let's move on to the city's real business here that we have on the agenda tonight of action items. So the first is a public hearing on the matter of the sale of city assets, which happens to be a wheel loader. And does anybody want to speak to that? And again, as you leave, please do it quietly, and if you want to talk, please go outside, outside the building, if you want to talk any further. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody want to speak to the matter of the sale of the wheel loader?
If you guys could stick around, we might talk about something you're interested in. Right? You could stick around, we might talk about something you're interested in. I'm not joking.
So without seeing no one, we will close the public hearing.
It's serious.
And move on to the action item, consideration of the sale of city assets and accepting bids for this wheel loader. And the steel bids will be received up until 3:00 PM on July 14th of 2025.
Motion to approve.
Moved by Caness.
Second.
Second by Toohill. Any discussion? Hearing none, please call a roll. Caness?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Okay. Next is consideration of contracted services agreement for Carnegie Historical Museum. Do you want to just kind of quickly explain this?
Personnel, actually.
I can say it.
Yep, so currently, we're paying two employees contracts. This changes our current fiscal responsibility just to one employee. It doesn't change how much we have to pay. It just pays the one employee contract, so.
Okay. Any questions for Terry? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved?
Moved by Gandy, second by Flornoy. To approve the contracted service agreement for Carnegie Historical Museum. Is there any further discussion?
He's not a city employee though, correct?
Correct, he's a 1099 employee.
All right.
Okay. Hearing none other, please call a roll. Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Maybe we should point out, there's no change in cost to the city goes into this action.
Right. Next action item is consideration of engineering services agreement for Step 4, and Marcus is here to go over that.
Good evening, council. This is the engineering service agreement for the fourth phase of the step projects. Hopefully, it's the fourth and final phase. This project includes water and sewer. The sewer runs from the Grease Lightning Lift Station north to about the intersection of Burlington Avenue and 12th Street, and we're looking at splitting this project into two phases, Step 4A and Step 4B. And we're looking at splitting this project into two phases, Step 4A and Step 4B. 4A would run from Grease Lightning to just west of the new Prairie Ridge Campground. And then Step B would run from there north to the 12th Street and Burlington intersection. And then Step 4A also includes extending water from Keene Wood Court to approximately 100 feet west of the Jefferson County intersection. The agreement is for the preliminary design of the entire project, and then also it is, includes the final design for just the Step 4A portion, which includes environmental review, land acquisition, and we're doing soil borings and all those items. That's kind of the overall idea of the engineering agreement. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. The engineering agreement is for $308,000 and 300.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
I make the motion that we approve the engineering services agreement for Step 4.
Second. Moved by Flornoy, second by Caness. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call a roll. Flornoy?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Next action item, thank you, Marcus. The next action item is consideration of temporary easement for Sunrise Trail Project. You want to give us the lowdown?
So the memo kind of explains the situation. Although, for the Sunrise Trail, we are utilizing a permanent easement that we purchased with the Libertyville Road project, 2015, 17, somewhere in that ballpark. It was an easement we purchased for Libertyville Road and then cut the project a little short because of the cost of the project. Because it's ag land, we do need to compensate the landowner for some damages related to maintaining their pasture land. So I've talked with the property owner, French Riddaker has met with the property owner. We've come to most of the terms. The only thing we haven't exactly determined is whether they're going to get compensated for temporary fencing, or we're going to have the contractor install the temporary fencing. So what I'm asking, because we have three weeks until the next council meeting, and the contractor would like to start before then, I'm asking council to allow the city administrator to sign something along these lines in good faith with the property owner and allow the contractor to continue to work. The highlights are that the buyer, and the buyer has agreed to a compensation of 400, sorry, the seller, the property owner, has agreed to a compensation of $400 for the feeding of their animals. And they have requested that they don't have a sewer charge during the months of the project that they're going to be watering their livestock. And then they will take care of watering the grass seeds so that they can get back on their pasture sooner. And that does actually save us a little bit in feed costs. And then again, like I said, the only thing that we haven't come to full conclusion on is the temporary fencing. So a very small payment. Typically, we would call this like a tenant purchase agreement with a farmer that's renting a farm field. But in this case, it is, the landowner is also the person farming the area.
This is the easement that's west of where the current roadway is.
Yep. North. So this is northwest of the Sunrise Trail.
Okay.
So, and this is right where we're, this is the downstream, even though it's northwest, which it is still the downstream point of the sanitary sewer, so it is where the contractor needs to start.
So I would move that the council grant the city administrator permission to sign the preliminary agreement.
Second.
Okay, been moved to second to have the city administrator sign off on this temporary easement for Sunrise Trail. Any further discussion or questions?
Maybe you mentioned this already, Melanie, but about how long are we expecting it to take?
We'll only be in their property for a couple of weeks.
Couple of weeks.
But because it's pasture land, we have to compensate them until the grass is reestablished.
Got it.
Some farmers ask for the growing season, some ask for a year and a half because they want it fully, fully established. And they've agreed to allow it for the rest of the summer season, the growing season.
Okay.
So they've agreed to be compensated through October.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Hearing no other questions, please call a roll. Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Approved unanimously. So the next three items, the action item and two resolutions, have to do with a bonding of, a general obligation bond of $8,455,000. These bonds are related to the fire station, Highway 1 and the roundabout, and Sunrise Trail infrastructure. So the first action item really is the legal part of it, consideration of bond and disclosure, council engagement agreement with Allers &amp; Cooney.
Move to approve.
Moved by Gandy?
Second.
Second by Flornoy. Any discussion? Hearing none, please call a roll. Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Okay, the first resolution, consideration to approve distribution of preliminary official statement for $8,455,000 general obligation capital loan notes, Series 2025. This is where they'll take it out to the banks and the investment companies to review. And I think that's when we get our, what really the interest rate will be too.
And our bond reading also.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Estee, second by Flornoy. Any discussion? Hearing none, please call a roll. Estee?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Okay, the next resolution, final resolution for this, is consideration to establish parameters for the sale of approximately $8,455,000 general obligation capital loan notes, Series 2025, delegation of authority to execute note purchase agreement.
Move to approve.
Moved by Caness?
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any discussion? Hearing none, please call a roll. Caness?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Okay, next resolution, consideration to authorize release and waiver of claims agreement and rescind, Resolution 3241, annexation of Huffman Estates. Melanie, Rebecca, do you want to say just quickly what happened here?
So this, back in 2015 era, again, we did the annexation of Huffman Estates. Unfortunately, the state denied that annexation because you're supposed to touch it by 50 feet, and I think we touched it by?
Forty.
Forty.
Maybe forty-five.
Yeah. So we're going to rescind that annexation resolution and authorize, your next step after that is signing a waiver with Huffman's, and we will repay them back their city taxes versus their county taxes. And they won't stay with us or whatever.
So make the motion to authorize the release and waiver of claims agreement and rescind Resolution Number 3241, annexation of Huffman Estates.
Moved by Flornoy, second.
Second.
By Gandy.
I have a question. So explain to me a little bit more so I have a better understanding of the difference of 40 feet, 50 feet. What are we talking about there?
State regulates that you have to, and when you annex land, it has to be adjacent to the city, and it has to be adjacent by 50 feet.
It can be.
At maximum, right?
Minimum. Minimum.
You just said we were adjacent by 40 feet.
So we didn't have enough contact.
We didn't meet 50 feet. We were 40 feet. So we didn't have enough.
Oh, we were 40 feet. Yeah, I got you. Missed up by that one.
Exactly. Right? So what happens with the 50 feet to 40 feet?
Same person measured the death of the lake. Joke.
So, in a perfect world, Paul, we would rescind that a while back.
I see.
Yeah.
Okay.
Instead, it kind of fell through the cracks.
Yep.
We can say. Okay, so we do have you first and second. Any other questions? Please call a roll. Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Okay. Next is Ordinance 1266. This is the second reading for sewer fee amendment, and attached is your proposed fee schedule. I'll open a public hearing. Does anybody want to speak to this schedule? Seeing none, please call a roll. Flornoy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance, this is the first reading, consideration to repeal 07.04.250 monthly charge for C compost service fee. That was 80 cents a month that we had put in place, so now we're rescinding it because we're not moving forward that this time. So, yes, oh, yes, thank you. I do have that down here, but I haven't read it yet. Thank you.
So we added this on when we did the budget, now we're taking it off again.
Yeah. And there has been a request from staff that we suspend the rules tonight and then?
Do three readings.
And then move it to the third and final reading today, so it's done, so it doesn't go into place in July.
So I'll make the motion to suspend the rules.
Okay.
Second.
Flornoy moved, and second by Gandy to suspend the rules.
For the purposes of this ordinance only.
Yes. Any discussion? Now please call a roll. Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
I do have some questions. I'm sorry, we just, you said discussion, and I didn't speak up, so how can we address that? Sorry.
Just go ahead.
Can I just discuss something real quick before I vote?
Yeah.
Okay.
Preamble it with the, you preamble.
May I just, just understand what this is? Because was this for the private composting?
Yeah.
And so why is that not happening? I guess I didn't realize.
So.
We discussed it at council. We did not discuss this at council, so surprise.
So what is happening is, is there, we don't have a new brush site. The existing one, the street department is still continuing collecting it there, at their facility, and they're disposing of it. But the existing brush site was never ours in the beginning, so FIDA is preparing to market that, and they're, have given us notice.
Okay, so, so they did not want to proceed with?
Right. And we have been looking, since this, this has occurred, we have been looking for a different site that we might be able to work with this private contractor. And right now, without us purchasing property or, you know, what have you, we're putting that portion on pause, and we don't want to charge anyone before we have a solution. So we're, right now, we're just collecting it normal.
So a wonderful way to evacuate that site.
I think they're working on it now, but it's, it's closed for the time being.
And has been.
It has been since this whole thing began.
Right. Yeah. And when did that, when did it begin? Oh, gosh, last year?
What do you mean, when did it begin?
When did they decide to market?
Yeah, that, I assume that's what you're talking about. Yeah.
I think they let us know a few months ago.
Okay.
And.
Yeah, that's the last time we were discussing it at committee, so.
Yeah.
I just didn't know that that was.
Just, just a few months ago, and, you know, it's their property, they can do as they please.
Okay.
So where's?
Estee?
Yes.
Where is the Jefferson Street Department building?
They, Joe's got that marked out, but I think right now that they are, they do have a location that they can burn, they can chip where they're at, or they can haul it to Semco themselves. Those are the options that they have currently, I believe.
Of course. Looks like they're chipping things and putting it on Jefferson. People can access there.
We still sell the tags for that.
Sorry?
We still sell the tags for that.
Yeah, but you're not going to decide by and hygiene.
Yeah.
That's part of it.
Yeah. Yep. Okay, so that was approved unanimously.
Just suspend the rules, at least.
Yeah, to suspend the rules. That was approved unanimously, suspend the rules.
Did you write it?
Okay. Okay. Now I'm looking for a motion to move this to the third and final reading.
I make the motion to move repeal of 07.04.250 monthly charge, et cetera, from the first to the final reading.
Second.
Moved by Flornoy, second by Toohill. Discussion. Questions?
No.
No. Okay. Hearing none, please call the roll. Flornoy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'm just gonna try to be quick under the mayor's report, a couple things. We had an opioid meeting last week. Was that last week, Elizabeth?
Last meeting.
Yes.
No, I'm sorry.
Yeah. And what, a new thing that I found out was because we don't have an official agreement, the city with the county, about those opioid funds, the county will be approving distribution of funds. I'll let you know what, what they decide. You know, I mean, we're all basically, people who are coming to that are, you know, listening to the proposals, although there haven't been that many proposals. However, there was a proposal that the county approved last week or the week before, I'm I'm not sure which. I think I found out about after fact that was approximately $9,000. It's spent for a program called Strengthening Families Program. And...
Did you get that paperwork that I dropped?
I did. And you know what? I meant to bring it and I left it at home. But it is a program. Jay Thompson brought this to the forefront. He's the counselor at the middle school. It's a program where they bring families in and work with them over two or three months, I believe it is. They provide meals for them. And it's one of the most effective programs to keep kids off drugs. And, and so they did approve that. There'll be 10, 12 families involved, I think.
Yeah, it's evidence-based. I guess the only issue that, that it doesn't really address is the age at which it starts, they start working with kids. It's usually around 11 or 12. I know that's something that we had discussed at the opioid meeting, was getting education to kids younger, you know, just about making good choices and everything.
Yeah. So apparently it's a very effective program. So they did approve that. So I'll let you know unless, and I have to say, this is new information that I was unaware of. That's why I was bringing these things for your vote. And Elizabeth brought up that because the city doesn't, has not requested in a formal kind of agreement, this X amount is the city's and X amount is the county's. You know, it's all for the county good, so.
So we're not going to do that? We need a 2080 or something like that?
Yeah, something like that. Correct, John?
Good.
Good. So I guess you can let that settle, but that's the way it is right now. So, okay. So, tonight, we're going to announce, Bob Ferguson's going to come up here. Bob, take it very quickly because we've still got a bunch of stuff to do. And I say, no good thing happens after nine o'clock. And we're at 8:59. We're excited because Bob is doing so much legwork for the top seven intelligent communities in 2027, and we are in the top seven for 2025. So this is our, their application?
This is our... Third time that we have been included in the SMART 21. And this is over 400 communities around the world do an assessment. You send them in, and there's a scoring rubric. And as the founder told me, it isn't how much you do, it's what you do. And so a small city like Fairfield can participate, you can compete. And so we were at SMART 21 three years ago. We were at SMART 21 last year. We made SMART 21 this year. And each year we did a narrative. And each year's narrative has gotten successively better. And this year I did have the advantage of not being able to work with the formatting. So I sent our narrative to the executive director. I said, Matt, will you please fix the formatting? Not only fix the formatting, he said, I just stripped out all the stuff to win the score high in your, in your narrative. So my beautiful 100-page narrative became a 40-page narrative. And last Thursday night, we got the word that we were of the 400-plus communities who competed, we were given a top seven spot.
That's awesome.
That's great. So they will come to visit in September?
Yes, there's a couple of consequences of this. Number one, we get to have a site visit in September, October. And so that's a natural goal-setting date for doing a lot that we could do with both city funds and with private funds and with volunteers and city staff to really bring everything in the city up to as high a level visually and otherwise that we possibly can. It also means that we will be putting together a world-class presentation about Fairfield to be presented in the Ben Dong region of Vietnam on the 2nd to 4th of December. And so we're going to have to decide who gets to go, who wants to go, and who's going to represent us. And there'll be more than one speaker. It's really actually a pretty thrilling thing because we have six other communities. Only one other in the United States, that's Hilliard, Ohio, which is a suburb of Columbus. We have a community in Turkey. We have a community in Spain. We have a couple of communities in Canada, and I think that's, that's the ground...
And one in Brazil.
Brazil.
Brazil. One in Brazil.
Brazil, good, okay, so you see. Thank you. So in any case, yeah, yes, yes, proud of us, and Brazil. So what, what happens from this is that we get to communicate and have an active cohort where we're talking with each other among our fellow top seven honorees. And so that gives us a really big leg up. And there's one story that I think is worth telling. I was talking to Robert Bell, one of the founders. And he said, you know, when Fairfield rose to the top seven, and this is, there's no favoritism here. This is a very, very complex and detailed rubric that they have developed. And there's, I think, seven or eight evaluators from all over the country. And if you win, you win. It's, if, if you're in the top 21 in, in the measures of looking at, you're in the SMART 21. If you're in the top seven relative to all of their metrics, then you make the top seven. So he said, if you win, you win fair and square. He said, however, I have been telling people for years that our methodology and our metrics apply to cities of all size, large, medium size, and small. Said, I said that it applied to very small cities without any real evidence that that was the case. So he said, when Fairfield rose to the top seven, I said, hot dang. We, you know, we're, we're now fully proven out. We are the smallest city ever to be named in the top seven in the 25 years of the competition. So I think we can be justifiably proud. And I think what we heard, you know, about an ethos of, of communication, I was very proud of what I heard at the beginning of this meeting. I think it, it speaks volumes about our community, the flexibility. And it's really nice to have what we have felt for a long time, and what there's plenty of objective evidence that we're an unusual community, to have this kind of recognition. So I, I'm going to suggest that we do join the organization. We have gotten as far as we have gotten without actually becoming a member of ICF. In order to do that, we have to come up with $1,500. Supervisor this morning said that they'll put $500 in if someone else pays the rest. So I'm here to ask the city $4,000. Now, there may be other sources of funds if we want to stretch it out. You could approve 500, or we could just get it done with 1,000. What that gives us, now did, kind of does everyone have?
They had it, it was attached.
Okay, everyone has the document. So you can read the three-page document and find out exactly what we get for doing that. The very first thing is that we get an assessment based on the metrics, the best factors, metrics that they have been developing over 25 years. And they normally charge $2,500 for that. That comes with that fee. That's the least of it, I think. You know, there's all kinds of courses and programs and metrics that we can use if we choose to use them. We have all of the power of that international organization at our disposal. But for 1,500 bucks, I'd say that's a pretty good margin. So that's, that's my ask for tonight.
Can I make a motion?
Yes.
Can we pay the $1,000 to approve this?
From?
Top seven...
Lost funds.
Lost funds?
All circle the motion.
Okay. Been moved and seconded to pay $1,000 out of lost funds to become a member of ICF. Any questions?
Yes. So what, what does the city get out of it? Like, is there a monetary benefit?
Well, without seeming too clever by half, what we get out of it is what we put into it. What we get out of it is, we don't, they don't give us money. But we pay the $1,500 and we get the advantage of 25 years of data collection. Why do you think that they did a contest where you had to provide absolutely detailed information on every aspect of your city? And then you can correlate those details with the actual health of the city. They've developed a tremendous database of practices that actually work around the world. So that's the first thing we get out of it. Second thing...
Wait, so you say work, work, what do you mean by work?
Work, meaning there are practices that actually help economic development, help social development. There, there are validated practices that tend toward improving the quality of life in the community on, on all levels.
I think what we're going to get out of is education of where we, where we've done things well, what things we're missing, how we can improve any particularly digital assets and improve upon those and help our businesses improve upon those.
Basically like a cheap, cheap console.
Yeah. I mean, listening to Depp, you know, tonight about the, you know, the little walkabout, if you will, that's just one, that's just a little teeny tiny pinprick, I would say, of what you can do digitally, right? But 20 years ago, we wouldn't even have been thinking of that. So now it could be part, part of our city, right? For tourism. And how can we take that and expand it? But also, how can our businesses also expand their businesses through the digital economy and what they're doing?
Through the digital economy? So digitally, are you meaning like online?
Potentially.
Is there something else?
Because that's, you know, well, I mean, that's one reason we've done so well is because we've had broadband, you know, to our whole community for a long time. So...
I started as an organization that was ringing the bell 25 years ago for cities to wake up to the fact that if they didn't start broadband infrastructure, they were going to be left behind. That has largely been, that's still a part of the, what they measure, you know, broadband, accessibility, equity, price, all that. But really, it's expanded to what are you doing with your broadband? To what good endpoint are you utilizing your broadband? And so one of the things that interests me is that if you have an organization with hundreds and hundreds of communities all over the world, many of which have made this SMART 21 and the top seven and, and the top, we have access to that big brain. We have access to what happens in Einhoven, what happens in Ben Dong, what happens in New Taipei City, what happens in Hamilton, Ontario. We've got access to that. And frankly, from a bragging rights, how many other small cities of 10,000 people can say that they have by an international organization been nominated, been named one of the top seven smart connected cities in the world? If we can't make some hay with that, then we're not trying very hard. So there's a lot of just bragging rights. And I know since this has happened and I've gotten the word out, people from all over the country are saying, wow, that is amazing. What are you guys doing there? You know, maybe I should come and visit Fairfield. So, you know, what's going to come of it? What we make of it.
So, we'll be talking, Mr. Economic Development Committee Chair.
Yeah, talking to you. We're going to have lunch.
And, you know, Doug likes to travel, so maybe he wants to go to Vietnam in December. So anyway, so there'll be, you'll, we'll be talking about it more. Thank you. So we need to get to this vote.
All right.
Any other questions, very quickly? Okay, thanks, Bob.
Wait, just so that I, I'm sorry, just so that I can clarify, actually. I'm not sorry. So we got the designation without being a member.
Yes.
But they've been, of course, collecting all of our data all these years. So we're going to be paying them for our data, but then also like their other expertise about, you know, regarding data that they collected from all the other cities as well, correct?
Well, given that the total population of all the cities that have participated, probably top 100 million, our 10,000, while our data is very meaningful because it's from a small city. They're not asking, you know, there's no quid pro quo here. It's just that, do we want to have a formal relationship with this organization? Do we want access to all the tools? Do we want that nifty evaluation that will come in and look at everything in our community and benchmark it against the best in the world?
Okay, I think I understand you, but I think we do, I guess. But it seems like a bag of tools we get and we've plugged it, become part of a big brain that could be beneficial to the city.
Yeah, that, that, that's it in a nutshell.
Good.
In a nutshell, okay.
Thank you.
Tools and the big brain.
Yeah.
Tools and a big brain. Okay. Go ahead. Kness?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Great, thank you. That's all I have on the mayor's report. Thanks, Bob. City attorney report?
Yes, Your Honor. Two or three things. One, last week, we had a hearing over in magistrate court about recovering our costs on the demolition of Mr. Napolio's property down on North D Street. The mayor testified. The judge gave us a couple of days to add some certification as far as invoices and stuff which shall be adjudicated with from over here. That's all part of the court's file now. And since then, the court has kicked it upstairs to the district court judge. I think I've explained to you that when we go after some of these things, the magistrate has a jurisdictional limitation of allowing us $6,500. He can find that the $18,000 plus that it actually cost and was part of our bid process and so forth is reasonable. But as far as awarding us a judgment, he needs to have the district court review that. Ultimately, the judgment will come back to us as a district court judgment. That'll also involve us having one more situation where Mr. Napolio can participate as a person in the hearing if he chooses to when the district court reviews this. Mr. Napolio's been ghosting us since back at the time when we were bidding the demolition. So I'm not anticipating as far as a high likelihood that he will participate in this kick-up to the district court. Anyway, the mayor did a fine job of testifying, et cetera, et cetera. So anyway, we are from, in that situation, probably going to use some of the certification and stuff that we did for some other demolitions that will probably be likely over the course of the next six months with some other 657As. So that being said, we have another house right now that I'm supposed to have a telephone conference with some family members and a lady named Connie up at 604 North Second Street here, which is a badly dilapidated house that she's prepared to sign over to the city, similar circumstances to the Kevin Franklin House a year or two ago. She has a lien against the property, but she feels that there is a high likelihood that that lien may be forgiven with a couple calls to a collection company that was pursuing something probably on a high contingent fee with a credit card company. So she does not believe that that company, that's a collection agency, is going to be involved in any way, want to be involved as a party in a 657, 6057A suit. I'm expecting that she will be prepared probably to sign a deed to us in lieu of the 657As. So I'll, I'll report to you more on that the next go-round. Third thing I guess I want to comment on is sort of what I'm going to call a parliamentary overview, something that relates to the past several hearings we've had with good participation from a bunch of public speakers, but which I think prompted me to suggest to the mayor that maybe we have the chief be sergeant of arms under parliamentary rules to make sure there's always order and, under his watchful eye, so to speak. And other than that, reconfigure things here so that we don't have any situations that may turn into verbal fisticuffs and so forth, as we've had a little bit of in a recent past meeting.
About being in charge.
Yeah.
So anyway, that's something...
Watchful eye.
Yeah.
That probably, we do have a good set of city procedural rules for the way we conduct our meetings. But from a parliamentary standpoint, if we do run into situations where the mayor has to gavel things down, having Dave positioned in this situation for large groups like that is probably the best way to do it. And I know I talked to Dave about this a couple of times also, that we did have some concerns about things like people taking off their shoes in the crowd and creating what probably violates a fire rule as far as the movement through the different chair rows and things like that. So sometimes it's little, almost invisible situations that you also have to make sure as part of maintaining order and safety. So enough said about that, but I expect once in a while we'll have something come up where I make a comment as your parliamentarian that I usually leave alone. Okay? That's my report.
Great. Committee and board reports, Walton Lake?
We had our meeting on Thursday, and it was lively and healthy, I think. I can't really add much, anything more than what Ed had said earlier. So we will look at having a meeting this Thursday at 6:15 at the Walton Club and continue the conversation and begin to look at apps that the city might be able to use to facilitate communication with the public, that sort of thing.
No, that sums it up.
Aren't we already looking at apps to facilitate communication? I thought that that was something that we are working on.
No one's exactly looking at it, I guess.
Actually, I just, it's, it's fine, but I had mentioned to Doug just recently that it sounded like Melanie had two or three apps and let the IT committee work, work on that?
Yeah, this committee can troubleshoot it.
Yeah.
See what they like, see what they don't like.
Okay.
You know, that kind of thing.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we, just my opinion, I think we definitely start with an app that the city approves of first, or multiple options that the city approves of, rather than letting the committee start with their own.
Yeah, I'm going to start with her suggestions. And I had, I got an email today about one in fact, so.
Great.
Might be the same.
Okay. Environmental and franchise?
Uh, there's nothing really actionable, but in light of the conversations that have been happening, I thought it would be beneficial to have an environmental and franchise utilities committee meeting to discuss environmental impact on potentially, you know, draining part of the lake. And then, of course, just talking about where the health of the lake currently, although we did have some members of the public attend, my understanding is that Matthew... that Matthew and Doug mentioned it at their meeting, and none of the homeowners, you guys mentioned it, right?
Yeah, we did.
So none of the homeowners attended the, this meeting, which was unfortunate because I was looking forward to maybe some more community engagement. But we addressed some of the things and discussed many of the points that the DNR brought up today. That was through Doug, Doug's input and Faith as well, they were really helpful in kind of explaining what the process looks like. We talked about collecting the data and then, you know, as the DNR discussed tonight, coming up with a plan and maybe some grant funding opportunities. Again, those are kind of far out in the future. And then incremental steps that we can take to kind of address some of these inputs, which came up again when we were discussing Pleasant Lake, specifically regarding nutrient and silt runoff into the lake and maybe things that we can do to engage with homeowners in a public-private partnership to, and through education to kind of address potential options that the homeowners can take in terms of minimizing the sediment runoff. So it was an interesting meeting. Like, I hope that we can have another one and have it attended by homeowners, but.
Personnel?
We've really already acted on the items to be discussed, the water and superintendent salary needed to be brought into step four compliance, and then the Carnegie employee contract.
Okay.
We did discuss staffing needs at the, at City Hall, but there's no action to be done.
Okay, great. Water and sewer?
So the step four, was that part of our consent agenda?
Yes. Well, it was part of the salary approval and the consent agenda, yeah.
Did the change that we were approved?
Yeah.
Is going to that salary?
Correct. Yeah, I double-checked that.
Yeah. Okay, water and sewer?
Yeah, there were two items we discussed, and they both have action items. The first is 411 North Court Street. There was a leak that went into the dirt and not the sewer system, and so Water and Sewer recommends that council, and I guess they'll make a motion, that we waive or we reduce the sewer fee for that household by $1,173.44.
You're saying wow on that one. Wait till you hear the next one.
1173, what?
411 North Court.
Thank you.
Sorry, that was 1,173.44.
Forty-four. Okay, great.
Because it didn't go in the sewer system.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay. First and second to refund 1173.44 to the North Court address. Any discussion? Hearing done, please call the roll. Rowe?
Yes.
Tuhill?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Okay, next one?
All right, so the next one is 2020 North B Street. I'm going to try to make this as brief as possible, but there was an issue with, I guess, a valve that's not supposed to be open, but somehow was open, and a lot of water ended up for one month leaking through a, well, into the sewer. It went into the sewer, many tens of thousands of dollars in bill. It was, I think, over $39,000.
In sewer charges.
In sewer charges. So because it went into the sewer system, you know, obviously, we are not recommending that we reduce that bill because the city is paying for it. But when the bill is large enough, the city does have a policy of giving the homeowner a period of a year to pay off the charges. So we've already offered that, and Water and Sewer is recommending that we extend that period from one year to three years, or maybe even more. I mean, it's a big bill.
They called it a fountain. It's more of a waterfall, really, is what it is, a waterfall system where they never even realized it was metered before.
That's what we just saw.
Because it would never be water that would go down in the sewer system, but because this valve was left open or partially open.
My understanding is that it had a separate meter associated with it.
Right.
That they would only be charged water for and not sewer. But then there was a leak that caused the water to go into a drain that normally the water would never see. So very unfortunate.
Wow.
Is there a minimum payment required?
Usually what we do is we divide that bill up by, if we're doing three years, by those 36 months, and they have to pay.
I see.
X amount plus the regular bill.
Yeah. So you want to extend it for a total of three years?
Yeah, that would be the requirement.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, moved by Flornoy.
Yeah, I'll second.
Oh, second by Rowe. Further discussion?
There's no interest on this three-year payment plan?
No.
I mean, I'm just asking to be sure, okay. What happened again? How did it happen? They have a fountain out in their yard. It's really, it's a waterfall system, is what it is, out in the yard. So they have a, what they call a vault down below, which the pump system is contained in. They shut it down in the winter, they shut it off, and they reopen it in the spring. Well, sometime before the point where they went back down to reopen it for the spring, somebody had partially turned a valve on down there where the water didn't go through the waterfall system, but just emptied out into the pit down below and went out the, went out the drain into the sewer system, which was metered. And normally that would never happen. The water would go from the pit to the waterfall system. It would never go from the pit to the sewer. It just so happened, they didn't, the city water department actually didn't even realize there was a meter on that portion of it until they went out. They saw the bill, they went out, and the city water department actually shut the rest of the valve off to stop it. But how it happened, they don't know.
Not our, yeah, not our.
They don't know. I mean, they're, we have guesses, but nobody can.
Culture guys.
The water and sewer department will, they are doing a pinpoint reading where they can determine exactly when that water went out. You know, I know they're probably curious of when the city went down and they accidentally turned it on, but it'll show when the city went out that the water was probably discharged prior to that point, so. You know, if it comes back different than that, then we'll probably come back here again, but that's where we're at right now.
A smart meter would be phenomenal in that instance.
Exactly. We brought that up.
Huh. Because a smart, you would have seen.
Identified immediately.
Yep.
Okay, so we do have a motion on second on the floor to have this bill be paid over three years. There's no other questions? Please call the roll. Flornoy?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Tuhill?
Yes.
Thank you. Thriving Iowa Communities and Main Street.
Thank you, Mayor. So you recall the day after our last council meeting on June 10th, there's a groundbreaking for the Sunrise Trail system, Sunrise Trail development. And the Thriving Iowa Communities application ties directly into that. The Thriving Iowa Communities application, if we're successful in achieving that designation, is going to mean that that division is, that subdivision is going to become even more attractive. I know that, and you all are somewhat familiar with, we've talked about this before, Faith Reeves is working very hard, very diligently on preparing that application. We submitted it, I believe, the second week in May.
Yes.
And we are going to be giving the small team that's been working on it, it's going to be giving a presentation before the Iowa Economic Development Authority and the Iowa Finance Authority on July 7th in Des Moines. We feel very good about the application. How many pages is that application, Faith?
It's six sections, and there were PDFs that were enormous. I can't tell you how many pages.
I mean, this is on the order of, I think, what Bob has done with the Community, Intelligent Community Forum application. It's massive. But the benefits are, would be tremendous to the city in terms of federal tax credits, Iowa state, Iowa tax credits, benefits that would attract developers as soon as we're designated. So we've got a subdivision that's ripe for development, just began the groundbreaking for the infrastructure, I believe, last week. So if we get this designation, I think, I think the city can be very positive about that. We can expect that the, that, as I say, the Sunrise development will become ever more attractive. The other thing I wanted to mention has to do with Main Street. Again, this is another application process the city is very deeply involved with. If you recall, the city has committed to $15,000 a year for the next three years to fund, I think, payment for an executive director for the Main Street, uh, Main Street community if we were designated one. That, we're having a presentation, a committee is going to present to the very same state organization on July 11th, I believe it's July 11th to July 10th in Des Moines. And we feel very good about that. I don't know how many people our cities are applying, but they're not that many, and our chances are very good because they have the experience of doing it in the past. That would mean if we were to get that designation, a lot of attention, kind of like Intelligent Community Forum, but on the level of the state, a lot of attention, a lot of intelligence, a lot of brain power on developing our downtown even more. So I just want to let the city should know we've been major players in both these initiatives. The chances are good that we're going to be designated for both of them. I would say you never know until it happens, but we'll probably find out later on in the summer. That was my update.
Great, thank you. Okay, city administrator report?
We went through 57, 59, and 61 North Court, and we actually brought in a building, a certified building code or a building inspector from Iowa City. They're supposed to be providing us a report that I will give to our city attorney, and I will pass that along to council as well. I needed them to evaluate that particular building of us moving forward. We also brought in someone to do a market analysis of that building, and we will be passing that report on as well to see where we sit, do some data collection. But typically, this, this particular building going to court, I want to provide a document to the judge that this is what we see, and I can pass that off to John and let him handle it, things the way he needs to handle it. I also, the DNR is still here, thank you Chad, for your input and coming in. We've gotten almost to the point where we talk about every day, via email at least, and sometimes phone calls, but I appreciate their expertise and the data that they give us, and we will follow their guidance and yield back to the recommendations they give us over time. With this particular topic of Walton Lake and some of the other things that we're doing has given us some pause that we have been going with the police chief of evaluating parliamentary procedures of this council, but also the safety aspects that we will be doing in the future. We can bring some recommendations to you to let you give us some guidance on how we want to move forward. But one, making sure that people can leave this building when we get crowds in a safe fashion. The fact that we have decorum is really important, respect on both sides of this aisle, and the fact that, you know, us as public servants, we have hard jobs, and that we have feelings, we are people, we do want to go home to our families, we have jobs here, we like what we do. We need to be treated with respect just as much as we respect the citizens that we work for. A couple other things, again, we brought up the IT apps of communication, we really do work hard at that, and we're looking into some other things, and we'll continue to bring up voice recordings and what have you. But also, the, going back to the meter situation, in the next few weeks, we will be bringing the meter company in. They're helping us look for grants. We have about $2 million worth of infrastructure that we need to install. We buy a couple hundred meters a year, which is not 3,000, and they're going to help us see if we can find ways that we can pay for those, and we'll be bringing those grant applications to you if something may or may not work for us. But we're also looking into a program where if an individual wants to purchase a meter and have them installed, then they can, but it will still be something that, you know, we'll maintain what have you, but they could purchase it, and then we can install it for them and help it go a little bit faster. But that's all I have for right now.
Okay, great. Project report?
Just a couple things to touch base on. The Chautauqua bathrooms, we had a walkthrough last week, and there's just a few punch-up, punch list items, cleanup things for them to finish up. We do hope to have a ribbon cutting next week and have the bathrooms open for the Fourth of July weekend. So we'll send out invitations to everyone for that, and I talked with Andy Hallman a little bit last week, too. So the bathrooms are still not open. We want to get the grass seed established, and again, there's just a few punch list items on that. As we were talking in the work session about the Washington County Foundation grant, the fire station, we've talked about the different, the removals of the various old buildings, the removal of the floor, the 1912 floor, which was not part of the original removal. So this was not stuff that was covered in the bond work, this was additional to Kristner. We don't have the final cost of this all figured out. We're trying to make sure that there's no overlap of excavation so that we can get the number as low as possible. But I'm going to say more than likely, all of our contingency is going to be used with that number alone. So if we want to strategically, even though we've never gotten the Washington County Foundation, maybe we don't care about being strategic with it, but I, we just need to continue to look for funds for the fire station. The underground work is where we normally find our change orders, and we're about done digging holes. I mean, we're putting in the foundations now, so things should be looking up from there, but we want to make sure that we stay, stay on track for the rest of the project. We'll keep writing updates, but I just want to let people know that we are, we would really like to see that Washington County money for the fire station as well. And then Sunrise Trail, we talked about that a little bit with the temporary easement or the temporary payment. So there was a pre-construction meeting held about a month ago. The contractor is going to be starting, I said mid-June in this, but I think it was mid-July, not mid-June. And so within the next couple weeks, and so we're going to be seeing dirt move, pipe being put in the ground, and, and, well, I mean, when pipe goes in the ground, you don't really get to see a lot, but there'll be equipment out there making noise, so.
Great, thank you. Okay, so before we go into closed session, I just want to thank everybody. I want to thank the public for tonight's meeting. It's really long, but I think we, overall, we did pretty well, and I think there was new information brought. Really want to thank DNR for being here tonight. I think that was good. I want to thank John for bringing up some legal points that I think were important to hear for some residents. And again, thank the council for their time, and I will take a motion to go into closed session. Moved by Tuhill or second?
Second.
Moved by Esti? Go ahead and call the roll. Tuhill?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Kness? Yeah, yeah, okay.